Good morning to everybody. At this time, I'm going to call our meeting to order and would ask that we have, Pastor, welcome for our invocation, followed by, if you'd stand, we will also continue with the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States flag and also to the Texas flag.
Father in heaven, I do thank you for the gift of a new day. As your word tells us that you are great in your faithfulness and you give us new mercies every day. Help us as we go throughout this day to reflect on that and see that no matter what happens, you're going to be faithful and we'll be surrounded by your mercies. I ask that you give this court a wisdom, knowing that they have to face a lot of difficult things, make decisions that affect a lot of people. Just give them that depth of insight to be able to see through things and to see them clearly. Just bless them with that wisdom. Father, I also ask that you give them a spirit of unity among each other so that they have that cooperation, that their reputation will be heard around the state and nation and how people will wonder how they have that unity in spite of all the diversity. Father, I thank you that you've given each of them unique gifts, temperament, personalities, skills, and allow those experiences to work together for the benefit of the people in Oasis County. Father, I ask that at the end of today, you give them a good peace of mind so that the words that have been spoken that were encouraging and helpful will be replayed in their minds. The things that were meant to be hurtful and tear them down just fall off without any harm. And so we give you thanks for them giving their time and their talents to bring blessing to this area. In your great name, I pray. Amen.
Commissioner?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Pastor, I just want to say thank you for your beautiful words and you do represent Calvary Baptist Church and we want to thank you for coming this morning. And I don't know if you know, but today is June 19th. It's Juneteenth and during these 10 days in Oasis County, we are celebrating the Juneteenth celebration, the spirit of emancipation, but they declared in their name that we would celebrate all pastors, all ministers, and people of faith. And so I want to extend those wishes to you and to your congregation. And spiritual leadership is so vital and important for a community and your words were very beautiful. So, thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, it is 9:13 and again, only because we have somebody out, I'll call Rohl at this time. It is Juneteenth, by the way, 2019, June 19th. We are at the courthouse, Oasis County courthouse, third floor. And Commissioner Vaughn?
Here.
Commissioner Modis. Commissioner Gonzalez, I'm going to proxy him. I saw his body here. He's here. Commissioner Chesney?
Here.
Okay. And I do certify, Madam Clerk, that a quorum is present. At this moment, we'll have a safety briefing by our risk manager, Tim.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, ma'am. This is the Oasis County Commissioners' Court Safety Brief. We are meeting on the third floor of the Oasis County courthouse located at 901 Leopard Street. Restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium as you exit the Commissioners' Court past the information technology office. Fire extinguishers located at the rear of the courtroom. In addition, there are five fire extinguishers located throughout the third-floor atrium area and immediately outside the courtroom. An AED is located on the right wall as you exit the courtroom between the Human Resource and Information Technology Offices. Participants responsible for dialing 911 will be Tyner and Edward. Participants who are CPR certified are Deputy Vasquez. In case of evacuation, egress routes will be down the atrium stairs immediately outside the courtroom. Proceed out the double doors located on the lepan side of the courthouse and muster across the street in the parking lot. In case the need of shelter in place is given, we will remain in the building and await further instructions from the Oasis County Sheriff's Office. Our shared safety topics are the continued safety practices of our employees, both here at work and at home, and as well as the safety of those citizens who visit in Oasis County property. That concludes my brief, ma'am.
Thank you so much. And Commissioners, as you know, this is new to Commissioners' Court agenda. I'm really grateful for the information and the completeness of what you just gave and I hope it makes, I hope we don't ever have to use those moments, but at least we know we have designees for both CPR, 911, and where our emergency mustering place is. So, thank you for that. Commissioners, you'll notice that there is a request on our agenda to recess for open public hearing. And Natalie, before you move, may I ask, would you mind terribly, do you have another 10 minutes? I'm going to take us out of order. I appreciate that. I'm going to put you right back, right after public comment. Okay. I very much appreciate it. This time, Commissioners, I'd like you to look at the minutes and we have a minutes, two different sets to approve. That is June 5th and June 7th. You'll recall that June 7th was our special commission meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. A second, please. I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you. At this time, I'll look to G, a board appointment. We have an opportunity to appoint someone to our Board of Health and Welfare. You'll recall that last Commissioners' Meeting, we reappointed Mr. Tony Diaz and Mrs. Belinda Flores, but they were already serving and we had five vacancies. This allows us to fill one of those vacancies. Tyner, do you want to lead us through that or do you want me just to?
Currently, the vacancies are still open for a couple of weeks, but we did have an applicant, Alyssa Costenbader, in Commissioner Chesney's office, so we wanted to go ahead and appoint her so she can start serving.
And I reviewed her resume and it's excellent. Is there a motion?
Second.
And I've got a motion. Any discussion? Is Alyssa in the courtroom? She was just here a moment ago. Alyssa, I know you're watching and we're grateful for your willingness to serve on this important board and I think it will create the liaison and the connection to your office. Commissioner Chesney?
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you. Alyssa is appointed. Okay, at this time, I'll take us into public comment and I need to sign up, so let me, give me just one moment. We have the RTA with us and that's why I'm taking us out of order, but Diane, I'm-
That would be Rita, Judge.
Oh Rita, okay, Rita's here. That's always funny, I didn't see anybody just yet. Come on up, Rita. Rita, welcome. Rita Patrick for the record.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
And Commissioners, my name is Rita Patrick. I'm the Marketing Director for Corpus Christi Regional Transportation Authority. First, I'd like to say, on behalf of RTA's Board of Directors and CEO Jorge Cruz Aedo, thank you for supporting public transportation. Today, we are applying for the FTA's competitive grant 5339B to update and expand some crucial areas of our infrastructure. Those include two small transfer stations at the new Delmar College Southside campus that will be completed by 2021. The nearest bus stop in that area right now is 1.5 miles away and the nearest transfer station is almost five miles away. Second, our reconstruction of our 25-year-old Port Ayers transfer station that has safety and security challenges. And finally, the parking lot of our 33-year-old operations center. It is in dire need of construction, reconstruction. I have a short video that will explain these three projects and how they will impact the ability for riders like veterans, students, and workers to get to places like the local VA clinic, Delmar College, and the downtown business district quicker and safer. So, we will show the video shortly.
Corpus Christi Regional Transportation Authority is requesting Federal Transportation Administration competitive grant 5339 funds to update and expand some crucial areas of our system. Rider safety and security, as well as route efficiency, are some of our top priorities. These capital improvement projects will not only allow us to avoid a lapse in service, but also help us expand areas that are currently underserved by public transportation options. Identified as one of our most essential needs is the construction of two medium-sized bus stations on the new Delmar College Southside campus. The Southside area has the region's highest population growth, but currently has minimal service in place. The nearest bus stop is 1.5 miles away and the nearest transfer station is 4.9 miles away. This project will create more mobility options on the south side of Corpus Christi, which will help to reduce congestion, emissions, and travel times. It will also reduce the number of parking spaces and vehicles on campus and increase mobility options for the students and the community. The parking areas on campus will also provide spaces for park-and-ride location, for special events, and for future parking for Viking Islander program, a partnership between Delmar College and Texas A&amp;M University Corpus Christi. The total cost for this project is $2,884,509. This includes site analysis, limited property construction, shelter construction, and additional services. Additional benefits of this project include improved access and mobility by eliminating gaps in service, enhanced rider and pedestrian safety, and a creation of a new transit hub for the rapidly growing Southside, which will help boost economic prosperity for the entire region. Also crucial to our system is the reconstruction of the Port Ayers transfer station. It is currently seven years beyond its 15-year useful life and poses several safety and security challenges that have developed since the site's construction in 1995. This station is a key link in our system's services and reconstruction will help improve the security and safety for riders and pedestrians. The new station will be built to meet the current and future service, operator, and rider needs. The total cost for this project is $5,811,845. This includes limited property demolition, new transfer station construction, demolition of existing transfer station, and building property. Additional benefits of this project are improved conditions of the transit system in several areas, including the cost of maintenance, operating expenses, system welfare, and rider pedestrian safety. The new station will also provide economic vitality to the area and enhance the state of good condition assessment rating. New technology will be installed, which will allow for rider alerts, displaying service interruptions and/or changes, and emergency awareness messages. And with park-and-ride elements built into the station, choice riders will have an opportunity to try transit during special events, thus highlighting the safety benefits, reliability, and convenience of public transportation. And perhaps one of our most basic needs is our bus parking lot at the Bear Lane facility. It is in dire need of reconstruction, given its condition relative to the state of good repair program. Cracking and shifting of the concrete is creating several issues, including safety risks, bus alignment problems, and accelerated deterioration due to the erosion of the subbase being infiltrated by water. This project is consistent with common local and regional priorities that include improvements to facilities, safety, customer amenities, and services to enhance quality of life, increase livelihood and mobility, and support future growth. The overall cost for this project is $945,010. Benefits of this project include improved conditions of the transit system in regards to safety for our employees, vendors, contractors, and pedestrians. A more reliable transit system for our riders due to reduced maintenance road calls and enhanced access and mobility within the service area. These projects have been identified as essential by the Corpus Christi Regional Transportation Authority and will greatly ensure and enhance rider, driver, and pedestrian safety. These projects will also foster economic growth for our region and improve connectivity and service to a growing population. We're always looking for ways to improve our robust transit system and create more efficient ways to move more people. That's why better starts with B. Isn't that cute?
We should know by the end of the year whether we receive the grant or not. Jorge and Eddie Martinez, our Board Director, were in DC this past week talking to legislators and the FTA presenting our case, so hopefully we will have a good turnout and results and we'll let you know.
Thank you. Thank you, Rita. And I know I was able to execute a letter of support.
Thank you very much.
And so, I mean, this is fantastic and whoever does your graphics needs to do our graphics. That was truly, a picture is worth a thousand words. And you really can, I mean, from the Delmar College, you know, to some of the infrastructure issues, it's really an amazing visual. And I love the idea of the technology, you know, really being upgraded to help us and this is just a fantastic-
We'll expand to our Southside, which will greatly help the area, which is much needed.
Really terrific. Are there any questions? Yes, Commissioner?
Judge, just a reminder, this is public comments.
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
My public comment is-
Well, mine's public comment back to you, Rita.
Yeah, mine's not in response, but I do have a public comment about the RTA, so I'll let you go first if you wanted to go first.
And just so you know, forgive me, county attorney, we actually wanted to get this on the agenda, but because of timing, we couldn't, so that's why I'm so free-flow here.
If you-
Why don't, you want to go next?
Whatever you can.
Go ahead. I'm going to call in Commissioner Chesney. We both signed up, Lourdes, for public comment.
Just in the vein of public comment and not responding to your presentation today, my public comment is I wanted to thank the RTA. Judge Canales and I recently went out to Port Aransas and got some input from the folks there in Port Aransas in regards to some of the needs that they had. The board and the staff was able to jump on at least part of it, which I really appreciate y'all being able to respond so quickly to their needs. Port Aransas's community has a real need to get workers into the community. They don't have the need necessarily to have the local bus route and some of those things, so they want to try to use, you know, their resources or your resources in a little different way. So, I appreciate y'all doing that. I would encourage, if you would take back, to make sure that someone reaches out to the mayor and the city manager in Port Aransas out there to follow up with the other part of what they had asked us for, because I think there's still some need there. So, again, I can't have a back-and-forth dialogue, but I do want to, I just want to make sure and publicly thank you for what y'all did in response and how quickly you responded to our request. Thank you.
We have been working with surveying the Port Aransas area and the surrounding areas and found that much, a lot of the employees that work in the Port Aransas area does not have housing that is available. There is no affordable housing in the Port Aransas area. And so, I went to the city managers of Ingleside and Aransas Pass and requested a local, in our local agreement, that would allow us to stop in their areas. We do not service those areas, but they graciously allowed us to stop in those areas. So, currently, we have six bus, six stops a day right now into Ingleside and Aransas Pass to get workers to and from the Port Aransas area. And TechDOT was gracious and allowed us priority boarding, which means that we bypass all of the line that is waiting to get onto the ferry and we can try to get the workers into Port Aransas as quickly as possible. We continue to monitor and analyze, is people riding, will they ride the bus, and how we can expand the services. We do have 47 openings for operators right now, so if anyone is looking for a job, we have plenty of bus operation jobs available that would help us expand into other areas. Thank you again for the letter of support.
I just want to say-
Commissioner Gonz, I'm calling in Commissioner Gonzalez for public comment.
Thank you for everything you guys are doing and appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
If you want a good driver, Commissioner Chesney will be a good driver.
Okay.
But also, I want to say that I want to thank the RTA for, it's been two years in the making, working on the Hector P. Garcia bus stop. Hopefully, by the end of this July, we'll see a brand-new shelter there with Wi-Fi and lights and everything else that's going to benefit everybody going to the Hector P. Garcia clinic. So, I'm still waiting for it, so-
We'll do a special ceremony to ribbon-cutting and we'll let you know when that occurs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, actually, next on public comment is Mr. Lance. Is it Hamm? Yes, welcome, sir. I believe the subject matter is highway safety.
Thank you. And I'll wait, if you'll mind, until the handout is given.
And even though we've done a very poor showing of this, I will remind you in public comment that you'll get a chance to visit with us and that we also have an opportunity through our own abilities to sign up for comment, to react or not. Okay. But that doesn't mean that your items would not be considered or addressed, just as a reminder.
I have two or three.
And if you need more, just, we just ask that we not, you know, abuse the timeframe, but whatever you need, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Judge. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. My name is Lance Hamm. I live in Kingsville, Texas, 912 South Creek. I'm a citizen advocate for year-over-year road death and serious injury reduction. The issue that I bring you today as a public safety, which I believe you would agree is your number-one priority, the issue problem that you have in the handout there, there's a high probability that Oasis County residents or other motorists traveling on US 77 southbound between Robstown and Bishop, Oasis County, Texas, could be seriously injured or killed in a vehicle crash as a result of poor Texas Department of Transportation, TechDOT, road engineering. In that, TechDOT's reduced clear zone distances of 22 feet for the replacement of a row of utility poles, and I have handouts there for this picture, directly via, deviates from safety guidelines outlined in the TechDOT roadway design manual, that's also in the handout, and also deviates from the safety guidelines outlined in the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials roadway design manual, also in your handout. Both manuals stipulate a clear zone distance of 30 feet or greater is required to protect errant vehicles from impacting fixed objects at a high speed of 60 miles an hour or greater with a daily volume of vehicles greater than 6,000. US 77 southbound between Robstown and Bishop mostly has a regulatory speed limit of 70 or 75 miles an hour and a daily traffic volume greater than 10,000. A little bit of background, I have been a safety advocate now for over 10 years. I have done many projects between Kingsville and Corpus. I've asked TechDOT to help me and help the people for their safety on many occasions. The Texas Transportation Commission in Austin last month passed a resolution, and I don't know if the Commissioner Court is familiar with that resolution, they passed a resolution to help out the Vision Zero movement, which is to reduce road deaths on Texas highways. And they're trying to get to zero road deaths by the year 2050 and half their rotates by 2035. Part of this resolution was to help TechDOT district offices formulate strategies to reduce highway fatalities. And that's why I'm here today in front of you to help you, help, or ask you to help me help TechDOT reach their goal of zero fatalities by the year 2050. Background information, I don't usually cut the chain of command, I go to TechDOT. I submitted an online complaint about this issue and they replied to me via email with no solution. I responded to their email with possibly three solutions. And although, those are listed there in your handout, reduce the regulatory speed limit to get within the safety guidelines. For them to do that, it would take a 55 mile an hour speed limit. Of course, right now, it's 75 miles an hour, so you can see how much of a deviation they're doing from the national guidelines, 75 to 55 miles an hour. Number two is remove or displace the utility poles to get within the safety guidelines. I don't think that's going to be possible. And then number three, shield the utility poles by constructing a crash cushion, barrier, guardrail system as suggested by the TechDOT roadway design manual, which is their own manual. So, they say if they can't stay within guidelines, they were, they will put a barrier there to prevent, to help prevent crashes and deaths and injuries of our people. There's a definition of clear zone there also in your handout, there in the bold in the middle. Basically, a clear zone is the unobstructed transversible area beyond the roadway for the recovery of errant vehicles. Such a recovery area should be clear of unyielding objects where practical or shielded by crash cushions or barrier. So, it's right there in their manual. They're saying that's what they would do to protect the people, but they're not doing it. So, in conclusion, my recommendation and hopefully as a public safety recommendation, to prevent death or serious injury during a high-speed vehicle crash into a utility pole placed only 22 feet from the traveled roadway, a clear deviation from TechDOT and national safety guidelines along US 77 southbound between Robstown and Bishop, I respectfully request the Oasis County Commissioners' Court to request TechDOT to provide the motorists of Oasis County one of the three solutions that I have listed above as soon as possible.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Diane LaRue?
Good morning, Judge Canales and Commissioners. My name is Diane LaRue and I am representing the United Corpus Christi Chamber of Commerce Foundation today. I would like to ask you to help me promote our event, Mi Casa Es Su Casa, which is a women-driven mixer that honors and celebrates the success of women in the coastal bend. We invite attendees to enjoy a glass of wine or a margarita, hors d'oeuvres, and good company at this unique event, complete with valet parking and celebrity waiters. Proceeds from Mi Casa Es Su Casa events directly benefit the Mono a Mono Scholarship Program established in 2007 to encourage students to continue their education in the coastal bend while promoting the growth of a local educated workforce. Since its inception, the Mono a Mono Scholarship Foundation has awarded over 300 local students with over $300,000 in scholarships. This time, we are honoring 14 women, our Oasis County judges, on June 26th at the Bay Jewel Event Center from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. As a previous recipient of this honor, I am here to extend to you a cordial invitation to attend this event. Women of the coastal bend who are United Chamber members pay $25, non-members $30. We are also inviting gentlemen to help us raise money for scholarships by paying a $50 fee to enjoy this evening with us. Donations in excess of these amounts are greatly appreciated and encouraged. I hope you will all join us. I know Judge Canales joins me in asking you to help support this event. Thank you to our sponsors and to you for helping support young members of our community.
Thank you. I know I'm not supposed to say anything, but I'll ask for forgiveness rather than permission. I love that the men have to pay to be with us.
Judge, don't we always? I mean, it's always our pleasure.
I'm sorry, Lourdes. I just had to, I couldn't resist.
You know what? That's the only reason.
Okay, okay. As I say, that's why we're not allowed to speak. Okay, enough. Okay, I want to extend one more opportunity if they're, in case, because I've had this up here, is there anybody else that needs to, from the audience, sign up for public comment? Commissioners? Okay, hearing none, I'm signed up for public comment. I went ahead and registered once for the RTA for my comment. And then this next one is for, the item number is under military appointments. And I think what I'd like to do is start here and then I'm going to move down to the, to the podium there. Commissioners and members of the audience and all those listening around Oasis County through our feed, it is with incredible pride and privilege that I have signed a certificate which reads as follows. "We hereby express our sincere congratulations to Andrew Fissinick on his acceptance of the appointment to the United States Military Academy at West Point this June 19th, 2019, signed by myself, Oasis County Judge Barbara Canales." It's also signed by the Commissioners that are here. And it is, I'm almost trembling because, and I don't really ever get nervous at the podium, but when you think of the notion of a young man leaving home at 18-years-old to really be the epitome of all that we say when we say a United States soldier, the sacrifice, the commitment, the discipline, the love of country, the love of flag, you have my utmost admiration, but you have had it for so many years. And so, I want to share as a point of personal privilege, and I get to do this because I'm the county judge and I got to sign up, this is your resume and it's too long to read, but I want the audience to know that I'm committing this month as dedicating before they all deploy out to their military academies, both men and women. There happens to be three from South Texas. Andrew is one of them. At our next commission meeting, I intend to honor those two students that I know that are going to represent us at the military academies at the Merchant Marine Academy. I know none of the, none from the Naval Academy and none from the Air Force, but if anybody does know and we've missed them, please let me know so that we can celebrate their incredible commitment. I'm joined in the audience, and he doesn't know this, but I signed him up, so he's allowed to join me, and that's Mr. Joe Guzman. He is the Director of the South Texas Military- Task Force, and as soon as I read this, Joe, I'm going to ask if you will help me pin something on Mr. Fiszenic, but Andrew is a graduate of WB Ray High School. He's ranked 15 out of his class. That makes him in the top 2.99%. For those of you that graduated, thank you, Lourdes. His weighted GPA is 4.49, so that's pretty incredible. If that wasn't enough, that he's a consummate student, he's also an All-South Texas linebacker for the WB Ray Texans, and he is member of at least 10 different clubs that all have him as an outstanding member or an officer. In addition, he's been the all-district awardee of the 5A Texas football team. He was the MVP Special Teams. This is a very big one for those of you that are academics. He is a National Merit Scholar for, excuse me, a National Hispanic Merit Scholar. He also serves the Corpus Christi Cathedral as Altar Server of the Year. He's involved with UIL State Track and Field. He's mentored students. He's been an All-South Texas football player, as I said, and he's a member of the academic All-State Elite. He speaks Spanish. He's proficient in so many skills. I'm so proud that he represents Corpus Christi. He's the only person that I'm aware of that is representing Corpus Christi in Nuñez County at West Point at this fall 2019. He leaves in under 10 days. Please help me with a round of applause. Salute a future soldier of our United States, Mr. Andrew Manuel Fiszenic. He'll be advocating for you one day. Andrew, I just learned that we had these, and I've only given two away. The first one I gave was just this week to a man who represented the great Dr. Martin Luther King and the indomitable force of Ms. Rosa Parks. This is the second key I give away. I hope you will hold it close to you, and remember that it's a key to come back home as soon as you can to visit your mother who will worry about you. This is a key to Nuñez County. Second thing I have to present to you, I'm going to ask Mr. Guzman to place, is the same seal that I wear and all Commissioners wear. We give them to people that mean something to us. We hope that you will remember us in New York at West Point, and I know you will be a leader in your class. The last thing I give to you is, I always look for something that is mine, that I've worn and that maybe you will remember Texas by. During the legislative session, and I have my entire legislative team with me, I wore the 254 to remember that I'm just one of 254 county judges, even though we think we're real important. The truth is, is that the whole, is the sum is definitely greater than the individual. And so, to remind you that even though you are an exceptional individual, you now join the whole United States Army, and I hope that you will remember us as somebody that really cares about you, but there will be so many that will be rooting and praying for you across our country as a future soldier. So, this is my pin. It brought me a little luck this legislative session, and this is just from me to you to remember the 254.
Sorry, but we have a Marine up here.
Joe, you were Army, right, sir? Green Beret, if I remember. Thank you. We're so proud of you. I want to recognize Mrs. Fiszenic. You don't get to be this great without having a great mother. Sandra Fiszenic is his mom. His dad is our chief trauma surgeon at Christus Bond. Dr. Matthew Fiszenic, retired, United States Air Force, also served our great country in Iraq during Desert Storm. You were a little boy when he left, and I've known you for such a long time, and I wanted to do this even grander, but I hope, Tim, if you're here, they have not covered our candidates at the paper. I've never seen, I had to Google it to double check. These are our brightest and best, and they're willing to sacrifice their life, and I think all of Nuñez County should know about it and celebrate it. So look for us to do the same thing to our two Merchant Marine candidates in the next Commissioners Court.
Judge, do you want to bring one of you to take a picture or down there?
Would you like that? Okay, come on up. Sandra, why don't you move that to Tricia? Come on up.
This unofficial godmother is here as well, my sister.
Andrew, remember two, remember two words, okay?
Signify.
Commissioner, I think Commissioner Joe Gonzalez.
How are you?
Commissioner Carolyn Fox. He's a Marine. Congratulations. You have to be appointed by your United States Senator and your Congressman to get this, by the way, appointment.
And your GPA, man, is a little bit higher than mine.
I think his GPA is higher than mine and his combined, so I...
It's pretty impressive, right? Sheriff, you're a veteran as well, Sheriff? No, sir. Okay. Who else, who else is a veteran here? Peter Collins? Sir, okay, thank you. Thank you again. Aren't you proud? Doesn't that make you feel good? Anybody went to West Point? No? Okay. It's a real elite group, isn't it? West Side. We're from the West Side. It's different. It's different.
Judge, will they let us, will they let us visit West Point? I just, that would be the only way I could ever be able to go.
Oh, good. Well, I needed it because, boy, I... So Natalie, I so appreciate your patience. I think you can see why it was worth it. Please come forward, Commissioners. Under certain development block grants, we are required under law to have a public hearing. I've never been through this protocol, Natalie, so guide us through it, please.
Judge, you need to recess and go into public hearing?
Okay, so I have to call us out? Okay, let me, let me gavel us out, Natalie. I'm gaveling us out, and the time is, gosh, I can't see that far.
Recessing.
Just recessing at 10, at 9:50. Close enough?
Close enough.
And now we got to come back into a public hearing, Lourdes? And so I gavel us into the public hearing 30 seconds later. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
The purpose of this public hearing is to solicit the input and participation of county residents regarding the proposed infrastructure improvement applications for the Texas General Land Office for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Fund. The amount of funding available to Nuñez County is $4,644,430.59. The amount was calculated using an approved method of distribution established by the Coastal Bend Council of Governments. The funds are provided to the GLO by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, referred to as HUD. Each proposed project must meet one of the three national objectives established by HUD. Benefit low and moderate income persons, which is referred to as LMI. This means that 51% of the residents within the defined project area must be low to moderate income. It will aid in the prevention or elimination of slums and blight. This does not apply to the county at all, but for purposes of this, we have to say that.
Okay.
Meet urgent need. This category can only be used after 70% of our funding is directed towards the LMI areas. The projects have been identified as follows. County Road 69 Road Repair from County Road 48 to County Road 52 will be $1,272,750.60. County Road 67 Road Repair from FM 665 will be $1,359,052.64. County Road 77 Road Repair from FM 2826 to County Road 30 will be $1,062,438.08. The fairground marquee signs that are used for our emergency notifications will be $297,002. Countywide drainage application match will be our $275,000. The courthouse emergency generator application match will be $378,187.50. And of course, we do have Commissioner Chesney's project as our alternate project should other, should our HMGP applications not get funded. The citizen participation plan and grievance procedures for this funding will be voted on under the consent portion of today's agenda, and that document will fully explain our outreach efforts, accommodation practices, and procedures for addressing, addressing citizen comments or complaints. Draft copies of each application are available in the Grants Administration office for the next 30 days for public comment. The period will begin today, June 19th, 2019, and will close on July 19th, 2019. The applications will then be revised based on any public comments that we receive, and the revised applications will be, will be posted for another 30-day public comment period from July 24th, 2019 through August 26th, 2019. We will then place our final application on the August 28th Commissioner Court for approval through a resolution and turn in the final application before August 31st to the GLO. And so now, at this time, if you guys have any questions or comments, or the public has any comments?
Right. So let me ask from the public first. Are there any questions, concerns, comments regarding this CDBG block grant and the projects as designated and outlined by our Grants Department? Okay, hearing none, I'll turn to Commissioners at this point.
I just have a question. You said that if these don't, aren't approved, there's an alternate, and Mr. Chesney's, what is that one?
Yes, ma'am. It is the County Road 33 Drainage Improvement.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Also, can you remind everybody, it's my understanding that we'll have another opportunity for public comment? Is that right, in 30 days?
On, after July 19th, we'll have another public hearing.
Okay.
That way, we will address any of the public comments that we've received. If we need to change a project or anything like that, we will do it then.
I just want to make sure everyone understands, we're not yet in stone.
Yeah, it's not, it's not fully set in stone.
Got it. Okay. Hearing, hearing no other? Can I, do I need to just get a motion and a second? I've got a motion, a second. All those in favor of the process?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. Okay, you're good. I'm going to get us out of public hearing now. Gaveling us out and putting us back in. See, normally the time is right here, 9:53 AM. We're back on the record and back in Commissioners Court through the consent agenda. Commissioners, I would ask that you look at items A through N and ask if any need to be removed at this time for discussion or any other reason. I'm sorry, what letter, Commissioner?
I'm sorry, oh, Consent Agenda, I'm sorry.
Consent Agenda. N, okay, letter N. Anything else, Commissioners, at this time? Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve letters A through M on the Consent Agenda. And I need a second. I've got a motion, a second. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. All right, let's tackle N. That's the Workforce Solutions.
Do you need some clarification?
Tiner, that's letter N.
What this is, Judge, this is a form agreement. It's been through the county attorney's office, I believe. It allows workforce to send, I don't want to call them interns, but it, it's basically a program where they assign, yes, they assign people. The county does not have to pay them the way I understand it, and it provides for a worksite experience. And so, I know that Julie's been working with workforce to get this, this far, and so, and the judge has been asking for it as well.
Yes, let me, I did visit with Ken Trevino, and, you know, we just started our internship kind of program a year ago. Well, this is an additional opportunity. It's always been our position that we want to make certain that we can, sometimes we want to have assistance, but not for a long period of time, and they're actually looking to create placement in locations where there can be work experience, but they get funded, as in the workforce does, from the Texas Workforce Commission, and it would be at no cost to us at all. So I could have somebody placed in, in our offices, for example, Commissioners, that could assist on special projects or at any real department. Julie, do you want to expand?
It would be following, of course, our county policies and procedures.
Correct.
And the county attorney's office definitely went through that contract very carefully, and so we were just partnering with the workforce to bring people onboard to assist us with day-to-day operations, and the workforce is willing to pay it in its entirety.
That's the best part. They're not, it's an internship in a way, but they're getting paid for it.
I have, I have another question. If we, if we're doing it with workforce, can we do it with a nonprofit organization? There's a group also that provide, that pays up to 20 hours for a student, college student or senior dual-credit college. They, you know, they have about maybe 15 students that want to place. Can I, can I have them call you?
We'll look at the contract, definitely. One thing to keep in mind is the age. Our, Nuñez County has a policy of 18 years old or older, for anybody that works for us.
I mean, Lourdes, would that be all right? Can Commissioner Gonzalez forward that to you?
Forward it. We'll have to look at the authority whether or not, we could, we could do it or not. This is a federal program, so we do have authority for this one, but we'll have to look to see if we can, if that one will qualify or not.
I think it's a federal program too, but I think they pay them.
We'll, we'll, we'll look at it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Part of our efficiency concept here, you know, there's people that might need temporary help, I know, and obviously, they're looking to place them in a correct way, right? So the skill set that they're developing, they're not going to put somebody in engineering who's, you know, not, has, doesn't have a background there. So they're going to try to match skill sets to our needs as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
In that case, hearing no discussion, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of item number N, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Now we'll move to the regular agenda, and we're starting off with the bank here because it's very exciting to be able to have our entire legislative team here. It's receiving a presentation from our legislative consultants on the 86th Texas Legislative Session, and the court would like to recognize Mr. Joel Romo of Texana, Mr. Ugo Belanga also working with Texana, and Ms. Patricia Shipton. This is our dream team here, our legislative consultants. I also want to know, do we have anybody here representing our legislative offices, Tiner?
I invited all of them.
Okay, just wondering.
And I got word that Veronica Martinez was going to be here from Senator's office.
Okay, but I don't see it. She just stepped out. Maybe we'll ask her to come back in just so that she can hear.
And Todd Hunter had a conflict.
Okay.
Did hear from him.
Okay, no worries. We just want everyone to know that we're so appreciative to our entire legislative delegation, Representative Hunter, Representative Herrado, and Senator Inahosa's office, and so we'll recognize her when she comes in. Joel, welcome. I know you have a PowerPoint for us.
Yes, good morning.
Start us off.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioner Chesney, Gonzalez, and Vaughn. Thank you for having us, joining us, as the judge mentioned, Patricia Shipton and Ugo Belanga. We were your feet on the street at the Capitol for the past 140 days. We spent more time with each other than we did with our families. We did enjoy representing you.
We feel so sorry for you.
We, and I kind of miss it, but we did enjoy representing you 24/7 at the Capitol at any point in time during the day, during the session. There were, if not all three of us at one time, somebody was there on Nuñez... of us at one time, somebody was there on Nuasis County's behalf, which was great, because there were a few legislative offices that would call us and say, can you be in our office? And we were there in minutes, and they were kind of shocked. But with all that said, we do want to give you a quick review, overview of the session, and again, we want to thank the hospitality of the offices from our delegation, Senator Hinojosa, Senator Hunt, Representative Hunter, and Representative Herrado, were always helpful, were always accommodating, and we couldn't have done it without them, and also, I want to highlight Tyner, little, Tyner and I have worked with each other for over a decade, and it was just like going back to routine, we were able to work together as a team, and, and he knew everything, he was a step ahead of us, or if not, he helped us get to where we needed to be. But on that note, we're going to quickly do an overview, and we're going to kind of pinch-hit off each other real, real quickly, and I'm not going to go through every detail because obviously you can read this, but you did have over 7,000 pieces of legislation that were filed this session. Our team tracked over 800 of those bills on your behalf. We lent support to nearly over 100 bills, and by that, I mean, we dropped cards of support, we provided input, we went to the hearings, we talked to offices about how a bill would impact Nuasis County, and so we, that was part of where we, that 100, over 100 bills comes in. State budget, I'll go into the details in a minute of how the budget impacts Nuasis County, but you do have a $250 billion state budget that began September 1st of this year. 58 bills were vetoed by Governor Abbott, fortunately, none of ours were. 144 did become law with his, with, without his signature, and over 1,300 did become law that he signed. Also, you should be proud of yourselves, we had a historic first Nuasis County Day, April 8th, 2019. We had a lot of folks from across the spectrum of the county government, from the Commissioners' Court, to the sheriff, to different road and bridge folks. It was a great day, we had recognition in the Senate, thank you to Senator Hinojosa, and in the House, thank you to Representative Herrado and Representative Hunter. And we also had a lot of visits with key regulatory offices, but also, Nuasis County was a force to be reckoned with, so that was nice. Some of the bills that were on your legislative agenda, this is where we're going to touch real quickly, property tax, I think everybody's still kind of going through the details, but we do know that it will be a 3.5% voter approval tax rate set that all the counties and cities will have to adhere to. Additional transparency measures, there's going to be a lot of details coming out on SB 2 that we're also trying to go through, and I think some of the larger organizations are going to be providing briefings from urban counties and TAC. So, that was one of the ones that we did watch on your behalf, and there was constantly changes in the SB 2, good and bad, that we monitored, provided input on, on your behalf, but that has become law. And I'm going to pinch-hit it to Ms. Shipton, who was kind of our point on the next couple of bills.
Sure, happy to. So, the Oyster Mariculture Bill, good morning. The Oyster Mariculture Bill is one that Todd Hunter filed, this was a bill that was brought by our friend Brad Lomax over at Water Street, but it was an effort that was a coalition effort between the Texas Restaurant Association, Nuasis County, the Parks and Wildlife, and the Coastal Conservation Association, and so, this went really well, it was very popular, it passed both houses, the House and the Senate, without an opposition vote, and was signed by the governor, and is effective September 1st. Todd Hunter is hosting a Oyster Aquaculture Summit on July the 10th, and Speaker Bonin will be the keynote speaker, so we had a lot of support from leadership on this bill. It's great, it's a, it's a huge economic development opportunity for Nuasis County, I think y'all are be, very proud of what you've done there. The K-9 bill, which we worked with Commissioner Midas on, and Todd Hunter filed that one as well, it passed the House, we had a competing, well, I shouldn't say a competing bill, a, an alternate bill that was offered by the Sheriff's Association with support from the city of Amarillo, and they had a similar situation to the situation here in Nuasis County. We got conflicting information from the Legislative Council as to whether or not we needed a constitutional amendment. Ultimately, the, the decision and the coalition, and the conversations between Senator Birdwell, who was the Senate sponsor, House sponsor of the other bill, John Smithy of Amarillo, and Todd Hunter, was that we should go with the safest route possible, the boots, the belts and suspenders route, which was to go ahead and do the bill that, and its companion constitutional amendment. So, that bill, the Senate Bill 2100, and SJR 32 were the bill and the vehicle for the law enforcement or retired K-9. The, the bill that actually passed was a much broader bill that included different service animals, including service rodents, which I didn't even ask about that. Yes, horses, and we don't want to know about the service rodents, because I can't even imagine what that was about. But anyway, that bill becomes effective May 14th, effective immediately, the constitutional amendment will be on the ballot in Sep, in November, November 5th. Joel, you want to keep on?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And this was kind of a, this one was kind of tackled by our three of us, transportation, some of your other items on your legislative agenda were the transportation fee, Road District 4 issue, civil case. There was no appetite in the Senate for moving any type of fee bill, and we did work, we made our case, the judge visited Lieutenant Governor's staff, key committee offices, they just wouldn't budge. And I do think if we have more time during the interim moving forward for 2021, we could probably get some support, demonstrate, bring them down here, let them realize what these funds would do to benefit Nuasis County. But I do know that between Ms. Shipton and Mr. Belanga, we did throw, throw it to the wall many times in the House and attached one of the transportation fees to three bills total.
We got so close, we did so good there. And El Paso?
Bear County, El Paso County, and then there was an omnibus one that I think targeted some border counties.
Right, that's right, the Eagle Pass Bill.
We tried on all three of those, and we kind of piggyback, they tried to piggyback on our bill. The Senate was just halting all tax bills, although they were happy to push a sales tax, but we shouldn't talk about that. Anyway, so, not for lack of effort.
I feel, Joel, that you might mention that one of the educational pieces for me was, and going back next time, we'll do so much better, once we got to the, the Senate's, you know, legislative group, you know, that would, it really opened their eyes, they didn't understand the nexus between economic development, our port growth, and these roads, and when they did, they were like, oh, I wish you would have told us that from the beginning.
There was some of that, and there was also, if we let one go, we have to let them all go.
Right.
Or, and I may defer to Mr. Belanga, a lot of it dealt with who was carrying what bill, if you let that go, then another lawmaker may get, want their priority, which could have hurt Nuasis County. It was kind of, you've got to be careful which battle you pick.
But we're going to bring, we're going to invite Senator Nichols to Nuasis very soon, and really showcase what we're doing here, and how these county road funds can really make a difference to the governor's platform of economic development, and that Texas is open for business, and I think we now know how to go about it.
Well, the, the other thing before we, before I get into this, I also would like to thank Senator Cohors.
Absolutely.
Who was an absolute champion for us, along with our own state Senator, of course, she represents part of Nuasis County, and she was extremely helpful, and of course, we'll cover some of the things that she did. The biggest obstacle that we had in the, in the Senate was, again, I think the staff started understanding, Nichols was not, in my opinion, at the end of the day, Nichols was not the problem. Nichols is a former chairman of transportation, and one who has visited the Port of Corpus Christi many times, and understands the dynamics of our port. The problem was that since the time that Lieutenant Governor Patrick has been there, he has never allowed a fee bill to pass. And prior to his administration, we'd had one for Laredo, we'd had one for Ivalgo County, Cameron County, all of them had done these, what y'all were proposing to do. So, and at the end of the day, I mean, I think we just keep coming back, and we keep trying to educate, and at some point, there'll be a change of leadership. Now, there may be a complete change of leadership here in us, we may not be here, but hopefully, we'll eventually get there. Now, the one bill that I think that really has an enormous amount of potential is the Road District Number 4, and I think the Lieutenant Governor's staff, they, they understood the dynamics of it. However, it was so late into the, into the game to try to really educate them, but I think it gives us an opportunity during this interim to really narrow in and look at the enormous impact, and what it means among all the stakeholders, if that full potential is capitalized and utilized. Now, the sticky point from, we heard from the staff was, they did not want this money to, just to go to a particular county commissioner's district. So, if some changes are made in terms of what you all determine and envision it, but if it's something that provides not only a catalyst for providing the improvements, I think, of road and bridge, but also, if you include the magical word, drainage, I think that really gives it some additional possess to it. But there's no question that, in my opinion, that creation, that legislation for that district, it is a game changer for this county. Absolutely game changer in terms of revenues and, and not only for the county, but also to solve some of the very delicate problems that we're going to be dealing with. And of course, this legislative session, there's a lot of money that's going to be on the table, the voters have an opportunity in November to vote for the $5 billion, also for, for mitigation and flood and all that. So, this is the opportunity for this county to really come together and put together not a, not a, not a drainage district, but a, but a drainage plan that everybody can embrace, and then start drawing the dollars that we need to implement some of the things that are going to be needed to ensure that we, that we are in the very forefront, because, again, there's a lot of money that got to be, that got put up on the table, and we need to take advantage of that if we're going to move to the, to the next level and have the economic development that we want, because we do have some serious flooding problems, and we also have some development that are occurring in areas that, that will not occur unless we start solving some of those flooding problems as well.
And then, probably would be wise for us, Nuasis County, to partner with some of the other counties around the state and see what fees they're looking at, and plan a kind of good little coalition moving into next session. We'll move on a couple of your legislative agenda, the double taxation, that one was a hard sell, we, a lot of education that needed to take place, and given that there were some, some pre, so court decisions that kind of made it a bit of challenge, I think we can come back again, one of those that we worked during the interim, work with our partners, we could probably make some groundwork and revise the bill again. Economic development, that was one of your priorities, it did pass the House, unfortunately, it did stall on the Senate. We did look at different vehicles to try to amend that too, and every bill that we had ready to amend got killed in the Senate, so we just, it just couldn't move. Term limits, that bill passed, House County Affairs, died on the House Local and Consent Committee deadline, so we, we will have to figure, I think the courts will work with the county judge on that for next time, or you might have some interim resolutions. Commissioners' Court Vacancy Bill, Commissioner Gonzalez's bill was signed by the governor January 10th, excuse me, June 10th, it's effective immediately, county judge has 60 days to appoint somebody to fill a vacancy, after that, the county Commissioners' Court can after that 61st date. And then a big one, I think, the priority, in my opinion, and I think really will make an impact on public health in this county, was Senate Bill 2315, the Nuasis County Health Quality Improvement Program. I do want to give hats off to Senator Hinojosa and Representative Herrado for forging, forging that policy. All three of us spent a lot of hours on that bill, meetings with stakeholders, hospitals, everybody that had a say in, in the world of public health finance, so I think we've got now the implementation phase to go through, so that's going to be a lot of work, the work is not done there, but kudos to you for putting that on your legislative agenda, and that did become law. And on a note, there was a similar bill that was vetoed by the governor, dealing with LPPF, so we're just going to glad we made it through and start implementing. These are some other items, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Belanga, since he's kind of our port expert.
I don't know about port expert, but I can say this, there was a very aggressive agenda that was very, in my opinion, very anti-Port of Corpus Christi, and it's unfortunate because the Port of Corpus Christi, as we all know, has been the huge catalyst and the economic engine for this, for this county. But with growth comes, you know, and, and like I told the commission yesterday, Port of Corpus Christi is no longer just a little regional or a state port, it is a global port. We are a major player worldwide, and with it, now everybody wants a piece of whatever's going on, and, and, and I always said, if you don't have a little, a little bit of turmoil going on or concerns being raised, then you're not doing your job. You know what? And we are the focus, you, you can pick up any article in Wall Street Journal, anywhere, any business magazine, and the port is being highlighted. There were a lot of attempts to try to undermine, in my opinion, what the port is all about, trying to change the name, trying to expand the, the composition of the port, and at the end of the day, with no, no real justification, because I don't care how you look at it and how you broke it out, the justification wasn't there. You know, there's a doctrine called one man, one vote, and you have a portion based on population, but even when you did the population, when you did the economic impact, when you looked at how much San Patricia has brought in and everything, it still didn't change their numbers. Now, maybe at some point, if San Patricia becomes bigger than Nuasis County, then you know what, rightfully so, they can have whatever they want, whatever they need, and I'm sure that, that, I'm sure they'll, they'll seek it. I don't see that happening, because I think this community is going to be, I, I don't think we recognize yet the impact that we're going to have in this county, and the population growth that's going to occur here. And that's why I think there was some move afoot, and why this legislation needed to be defeated, because at the same time they were doing that, there were also had been negotiations, for example, with the city of Corpus Christi for the last three years on annexation. And then there was a bill that got introduced by them that also dealt with annexation to nullify the city of Corpus Christi's ability to rightfully annex the land that they own. We, we, the taxpayers in Nuasis County, would be, and Corpus Christi would be losing out. This is our, this is our property, that belongs to us, and we're entitled to it. Now, we're setting the fact that it would have no impact on their taxation or anything, but it was just a, at the same time they're negotiating, they decide, you know what, we want this legislation. Well, you can't have it both ways. They ought to be glad that Joe McCombs still moved forward and allowed the annexation to occur in a, in a orderly manner, because anybody else would have just said, you know what, we're not going to give you any of the land that we had proposed to give you for your future development. But, you know what, we think regionally, we were trying to be good neighbors, at the same time, I don't think they were being as neighborly to us as they could have been. But having said that, the, I think we have challenges ahead of us, and, and at the same time, I want to congratulate you, y'all took on a very ambitious agenda in a very short period of time. And I think with proper planning, and we'll get into that later, I think we can look forward to a lot of other good things that we can try to do collectively.
Few other bills of interest, actually, one dealing with notice of intent, so when you have a local bill, you have to publish a notice of intent, but you've never had, nobody's had been required to disclose who that, who's paying for that ad, because that ad has to be paid for in a local paper. So, Representative Hunter and Senator Hinojosa passed House Bill 2365, which will now require any notice of intent that has, that is published in a paper must disclose who's paying for that ad. That was a smart move, signed by the governor. San Patricia boundary legislation, I think we talked a little bit about that, defeated. Windstorm insurance, the sunset bill on that really...
I want to point out that that San Patricia boundary legislation would have detrimentally impacted Nuasis County's taxable assessed value, and was a complete and direct threat to lands that, that belong to Nuasis County and have been since, for the last 100 years. And so, that defeat was, was just as important as any victory that was out there.
I think we have to be cautious, because it'll come back.
It'll come back.
So, we'll have to keep an eye on that and be proactive. Windstorm, there were numerous windstorm proposals, dealing with everything from reforms of coverage, liability, deadlines for claims, a sunset bill, and I will give kudos to Representative Hunter. There was a point where one of these sunset bills, I can't remember which one, was about to die on the House floor, and you don't hear much of him on the floor, he gets stuff done behind the scenes. He stood up and gave a very passionate, and, and strong speech, turned red in the face, I think even pounded the podium, and turned the vote around and saved windstorm, and then he went and sat down. So, and I can't remember which bill it was, do you remember?
It was a bill that would have, that would have, that would have frozen rates, it would have frozen rates, and it would have created a study, and folks from West Texas tried all kinds of amendments to include natural disasters, tornadoes, et cetera, in the same windstorm rates, and trying to lob onto that, and then they tried to kill the bill outright. And he got up there and, and he talked a lot about how we, we in the coast do for ourselves, and we're happy to do for ourselves. we're happy to do for ourselves, but we're not going to stand for an attack. And it was really passionate, and they had failed. The bill itself was in a nosedive, and every one of those amendments indicated that the bill itself was going to go down. Hunter's speech turned that whole floor around, and he overwhelmingly won that. It was really, it was really-
Yeah, as long as John Smithy's in office, the coast is under attack for windstorm, so.
And on that note, I know there is a windstorm summit, June 26th, at the United Chambers doing, at the Ortiz Center, just a little public service announcement there. Oasis County, how you fared with the budget? And sadly, we did not see the increase in bays and estuaries. Again, I think if we can start working now and we can get some additional funding put in what we call the Legislative Appropriations Request of that agency, and those agency budgets, they're starting to work on them now. The drafts of the LARs will start being put together early next year, and they'll have the hearings on them next summer. So we can get some leverage and start working now, we can see that increase. But there was just, with the change on the conference committee and priorities, it just didn't make it. But what you did see was a preservation or increase of 25 million in SP 500 for courthouse restoration grants, 20 million in port access improvements, which will benefit this area, 500,000 for the state aquarium, 21 million for post Hurricane Harvey efforts that will, as you can see, will do a number of great projects, and the 4 million for Port Aransas. And I think that was key. And Hugo, do you want to share a little bit about that?
Port Aransas, and then again, because of Todd Hunter and Lois Coors, they're toward their end, we were, they'd had a very tough time dealing with the GLO and whatnot, and we finally, they got pointed in the right direction at Texas Office of Community Affairs, and we had a meeting over there, and they were willing to provide 4 million toward this project. They needed 8 million. And so in those discussions there, I came up with the idea to come up with a rider as quickly as possible, and the agency helped put it together. And I got Todd to put it into Article 11, which is the wish list. I mean, that's the best we could do. The Senate had already passed their bill. All we did was just, all I wanted to do was to be in play. And as you well know, Brent, Article 11, the wish list, hardly anything ever comes out of there. I just wanted it in play, and we'll let the, and then we'll let the players play. And, well, Lois Coors was just unbelievable. And she secured the 4 million for Port Aransas, which gives them the 8 million for affordable housing, which is critical to that community. And so they were on cloud nine. I mean, up until yesterday, they weren't to be sure, they hadn't been lying out and vetoed or anything, but kudos to Todd for getting it in there quickly for us, and kudos to Lois, who was on conference committee, really paid off and was able to bring it home for us. So we're very fortunate to have both of them representing us.
Additionally, we've got some Hurricane Harvey relief efforts, SB 6, SB 2340. For the sake of time, I'm not going to read through all that, but there are some great opportunities, some planning that'll start taking place that we probably need to discuss with agencies having to start having reports by the first of the year on disaster relief and planning. And so SB 6 is one of those components, HB 5 as well engages the Texas Department of Emergency Management. Flood Infrastructure Fund, I think we, Mr. Berlanga referenced that, there's a huge opportunity for some funds. There'll be a constitutional amendment as well, HJR 4. There'll be some great opportunities to do some public service and raise awareness about encouraging our voters to go out and approve that, so that enabling legislation can get those funds into areas like Oasis County, et cetera. Again, there's a handful, we'll probably, what I'm gonna do and work with the team is we'll put together a Hurricane Harvey one pager or something that kind of is as simple that we can use to work during the interim for implementation and make sure all the departments in the county are engaged, because there will be a lot of planning that goes in place with the GLO, Parks of Wildlife, TCEQ, and the federal government. I'm gonna go ahead and jump to interim strategy. So legislature meets every 140, 140 days every odd year. Personally, I think they should meet every 140 years for two days. But we're stuck with the constitution that we have.
Amen.
So we have to start now with developing all our priorities. Our recommendation from your legislative consultants here is that we get all your legislative priorities from your county Commissioners Court to your sheriff, to your clerk, et cetera. Let's start throwing those ideas out, so maybe we could have a coordinated legislative approach for 2021. Again, we probably need to have, the judges suggested, we probably need to do a debrief with our staff. We all recommend late this summer, because none of our staff really, they deserve this time off. The last thing on their mind is starting to plan for 2021. A lot of them are taking much time, much needed time off, but we need a debrief with them, and we need to start looking at interim studies that you, the county, may want to submit through your lawmakers for committees to have and look at during the next 18 months. They will have hearings. Unfortunately, things have changed from the days of Mr. Berlanga was in the House when the interim hearings maybe met once or twice during that 18 months. It's a full-time session. Those hearings are happening every month. There's numerous hearings happening. So we need to look at what issues we may need to suggest. Is it a fee study? Is it a transportation? We need to come up with some suggested language and get those to our lawmakers. Our suggestion also is maybe having a legislative visit here in 2020 of everybody. We invite not just key leadership from the governor down, but agencies and lawmakers and their offices. You have a Oasis County legislative trip. They see the bays and estuaries, they see the college, they see the courthouse, they see some of the roads you don't. Take them down that road that's bumpy that you want them to help you fund. Make sure, a lot of them have, may not know about the port. We got a lot of new staffers, so I wouldn't, we all recommend that we start working on a day for that in 2020, as well as start your legislative package now. We, again, as all that is mentioned, we would all recommend that you start your legislative package review with the delegation and county officials by next August, because you want your delegation to be on board and to be able to support you on your bills or tell you what obstacles are going to be ahead of us. And also, they can garner support with their colleagues. We also should go ahead and establish an Oasis County Day in 2021, so we can start shooting for that, because folks are already booking days now for the next session. I would, we all recommend that you do your legislative agenda, have it adopted by the Commissioners Court, shoot for September 1st of 2020. Because one thing you want to keep in mind is bill filing starts that first Monday after the election of November 9th, 2020. So bills are going to be filed. Not that it means you have to have your bill filed first, but at least you already know what you're up against, who's going to be with you, who's going to be against you. You get your respective county associations, urban counties, TAC, Sheriff's Association, Clerk Association, all those groups to endorse your package ahead of time. We don't want to make it too easy, because you need three of us. But we do need you to think, start thinking long-term. And again, the legislative session is only 18 months away. January 12th, there'll be the swearing in day. With that, I think from all three of us, we appreciate the opportunity to represent you, be your feet on the street. Again, working with Tyner was great. It's nice to have somebody that kind of knows the ins and outs of the county. Each one of you, thank you for coming to the Capitol when you did. It made a difference to have each of you walk the halls or make calls, be with us so you saw what was happening. And with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to any of our colleagues, or if y'all just have questions, we're happy to answer that.
Commissioners.
I just want to say, thank you guys for everything you did. I know that, I know you were working, because I know, I talked to some of you, Joel and Hugo, at nine o'clock at night, 11 o'clock at night, you know, about the bills, and especially the one, the term limits and the vacancy bill. So I appreciate everything you did to get that bill passed, really, really appreciate it. You know, I want to just mention two things. One, I'd just like to mention that Urban Counties gives a lot of support. You know, they stuck by us, and they went to the committee meetings, and they were there to support it, and they submitted cards of support. I'm very disappointed in TAC. I'm going to tell you that, I want to say in open court, I'm very disappointed in TAC because TAC did not show the support. You know, they didn't go to one committee meeting, you know, and I'm very, I already told them that, too. I met with the president of an association this past week, I was at the conference, and I let them know. And I also let them know how it felt, and I was speaking for all the Commissioners Court, I was speaking for myself, but I came back and told the judge, you know, that how I felt about it. So I think we need to work, and what we need to do work, we need to work on TAC also. If they're gonna, if we're gonna be a member of TAC, I think they need to represent everybody equally, not just who they choose to take. Got 254 counties. I asked them to give me the counties they were supporting, and they couldn't give them to me. So, I mean, if they even supported 10, it's not enough. We've got 254. So I really, I just wanted to let you know that I'm really disappointed, and they know that, so, thank you.
Commissioner Chet.
Judge, you know, I really am excited that we're talking about a legislative agenda already-
Me, too.
-for the next session. I have been a strong advocate since my days on the City Council, well before that, of having a strong legislative agenda and a strong legislative team in place. I know that costs money. I know that's taxpayer dollars, I don't take that lightly, but I can tell you from firsthand experience, both working in the legislature, being a lobbyist, sitting on the City Council, sitting in the Commissioners Court, if we don't have that in place, we're just going to get screwed. I don't know how else to say that nicely, because everybody else does. And it's just the way it is. If they said, okay, all lobbyists are gone forever, then great, we're all back on equal footing. That isn't going to happen, and we can either stick our heads in the sand and say, you know what, we're just going to let Tyner go up there, or Judge Canales go up there and rep, it just doesn't work that way. It just doesn't work that way. You heard a little bit from our legislative team talking about some of the maneuvering that they were doing to amend this and amend that, and they just barely touched on that. There is so much sausage making that goes on during the legislative session. And honestly, Hugo Berlanga was probably one of the best at backroom maneuvering in his day as a legislator. That's why he rose to the ranks of Speaker Pro Tem. I mean, anybody knew how to maneuver that system, it was certainly Representative Berlanga, Speaker Pro Tem Berlanga at the time. So I think this is important. I think we have to do it. Certainly, I like the 2021, or 2020 suggestion on finalizing, but certainly we might be able to add a few things afterwards, because certain things come up that we don't know about. We don't know who we're going to have to defend against, you know, that can come late. But I think that's so important, and I think we need to set aside at some point soon, a lengthy workshop, bring them back, do the entire meeting on that, because it's that important. You heard about how important having, and let me tell you, having two senators, even if it's just a piece of Oasis County, is huge. And it's especially huge, like it or not, because we have one Republican and one Democrat. And the reality in which we live is, we have a House that's 8367 Democrat, and we have a Senate that is, or excuse me, Republican, and we have a Senate that is majority Republican, but there, that's changing also. And we have to have both sides of the aisle represented. We have to have both strong groups on both sides, and the fact that we have a strong Democrat House representative and a strong Republican House representative is a huge deal. We're really kind of an ideal county in some respects, because, you know, there's parts of the state that only have Democrat representatives, and there's parts of the state that only have Republican representatives. And that can be very problematic. So we have a balance here that is important. And I think that's, and I will tell you, in my conversations, and I know Joel and Senator Cole-Corst are very good friends, and she and I went to school together, and we've maintained a strong relationship over the years. She doesn't just help us in Port Aransas. You know, she doesn't represent all of Oasis County, but when we go to her, and she's helped us with things that aren't just Port Aransas, and I think everybody needs to know that. And so to have a strong Democrat senator, a strong Republican senator, is, it's just crucial. And so also, it's very crucial to have a strong, balanced legislative team, of which I think this court, through difficult discussions, did a really good job of putting together. And I think we need to do everything we can to work to continue that with that team, because each of these three people bring different skill sets, contacts, et cetera, balance, if you will, in my opinion, and have done a really good job of doing that. And of course, I know, Judge, you were up there a lot more than any of us were, and we appreciate your leadership in going up there and doing those things. But we did get in the game late, and part of that was trying desperately as a court to defer to the incoming county judge, to not look as though we were trying to pull anything or do anything, because things were changing, and we really paused and let her get here and get her feet on the ground before we picked our team, before we really, you know, we finalized some of our agenda, but there was things that, you know, we didn't get on there that we should have. And there was a lot of transition between administrations that caused some of this that won't have this happen the next time, because there won't be that transition. So I know I'm kind of rambling, but this is an important deal for me. I, it's part of my history, it will always be part of my history, working the five legislative sessions in different capacities that I did. You know, I had a conversation, it may have even been with Patricia when I was up there, and said, you know what, why did you not want to stay up here? And, you know, you lobbied, and you had all these contacts. And I said, you know what, because I don't want to have to kiss legislators' butt for the rest of my life. And so that's basically what these people have to do. And again, I'm sorry, I don't know how to say that any nicer, and I'm not trying to be politically incorrect, but they really have to go up there and spend a lot of time. I know, I get it, but it is what it is, and these people have to go up there, and they have to work with these relationships and work with these legislators, and they have to develop these things. And it's so important, because, again, we can stick our heads in the sand and say, we're not going to do it, and it's a waste of taxpayer dollars, and I get that argument, and I've been criticized for it, and I'm okay with that, because it's not a waste of taxpayer dollars. It saves more taxpayer dollars than it costs, by far, by far. So I appreciate everything that y'all did. We had some successes, we had some not some successes, I don't want to call them failures, because we did get into the game late. We, you know, it's really, 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 really hard to pass a bill in the legislature. It's not as hard to kill a bill as it is in the legislature. When I was spending time in Austin, if someone came to us and said, we want to pass all these bills, it was a lot more difficult, a lot more costly, a lot more time involved. So we have to keep that in mind going forward, that sometimes your successes are measured by what you're able to help defeat, as much if not more than by what you're able to pass. So I think we did have a successful session. Did we get everything we wanted? Nope. And I think, you know, like the term limits bill, I think that was really misinterpreted in Austin. You know, and we did that real fast, because we did, and we should have done it for all our constitutional boards, so that it didn't look like it was a vindictive thing, because it really wasn't. Look, I believe in term limits. If they put something out there that term limited county commissioners, I'd vote for that. I believe in the concept of term limits. I have believed in that for a long time. And it has nothing to do with who's on a board or who isn't on a board. It's all about, that's just what I believe in. And so we're going to put that back on, or I hope we're going to put that back on, but we're going to put it on with every constitutional board that we have, so that it is what it appears to be. We have something on our agenda today that's going to hopefully be passed, where we're putting term limits in place for all the non-constitutional boards here in Oasis County. Not because we don't like anybody, or because we don't, we're trying to get anybody, but because I have a belief, and I think the majority of this Commissioners Court has a belief, that term limits is a good thing. So, yeah, there's things that could have been done differently, you know, we did it fast, all the time, people get their feelings hurt. I'm sorry if anybody got their feelings hurt. Certainly, that wasn't the intent on any of these bills that were put forth, but I get that people, you know, hear things and see things differently than, you know, depend, doesn't matter what you say, sometimes they still believe you have a hidden agenda. And, you know, my hope, too, I'll be honest, I hope we don't spend the next 20 years continuing to fight with San Patricio County over everything that comes down the pike. There has to be reasonableness on both sides. I believe there is reasonableness on this side, and I believe there are a lot of reasonable people in San Patricio County. I mean, I've known the mayor over there for years, she's a wonderful person. Judge Krebs is a super nice guy. I mean, I don't believe they're doing anything other than protecting their county, just like we're protecting our county. And that's our jobs, and sometimes we're not going to agree on those things, and, but, you know, there's got to be a time to sit down and, you know, with an olive branch and some, you know, because we, I don't want to, I think we wasted a lot of our political capital defeating things that shouldn't have been out there in the first place, but we had to, and that's what we had to do. And if someone attacks Oasis County, I mean, make no mistake, if somebody, if it's whatever county it is, attacks Oasis County, and I think it's an attack, I'm going to fight like heck to protect Oasis County, because that's what I'm supposed to do. So anyway, I promise I won't talk this much the rest of the meeting, Judge, but this is a real important issue to me, and this is a real important, long-term situation that we have to continue to protect. And I'm with Joel, I wish they'd meet 140 years for two days, but it doesn't work that way. It's a scary deal. I'm not trying to criticize, I mean, they're doing what they think is best, too. I don't, what I didn't, what I didn't hear in this, and I guess that my question, so I'll end with a question, is I don't know, I don't know if we've got an analysis yet on how the unfunded mandates might have, if there were, and what there were, because those always are things that we look at. So if there's, if that was a relatively light session on that, then, man, we can all rejoice. So maybe-
Unfortunately, not, and we're working on that with the auditor, and you're going to see one in- Unfortunately not, and we're working on that with the auditor, and you're gonna see one in particular. Joel, I'm gonna ask you to help us on this. The longevity pay for the district courts and the county courts at law are gonna impact us severely. And that's just one. There's also a $5 filing fee that's also gonna impact us, and some others that I'm watching. Anyway, I want to thank you for your voice, and the time was worth every penny. Commissioner Vaughn?
Well, it's your lucky day. Mine won't be this lengthy. So if we go longer today, Brandon, it will not be the judge's fault.
Thank you, Carolyn.
First, I want to thank the judge for her leadership, because this was done so quickly. We did not have very much time, and you just got right on that. I want to thank each of you for all that you did. You were a great team, and I think that you were all equally important for what you brought to the table. Saw a lot of good things that you did. I really liked the notice of intent, because transparency is so important. And all the other things that you did, the windstorm and all the others. I like your recommendations. I think we do need to get on it and get on it quickly. One of my big issues is the drainage plan, our solution. I'm hoping that this next legislative agenda, that's going to be on there, because we do not want to be like Caris County was when a hurricane comes. So I think that needs to be a priority, but thank you for everything that y'all did.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, and I made a few notes, and I'll try to be brief, but, so you guys gave credit to everybody but yourselves. Let me remark that this was not a Republican Noises County agenda. It was not a Democratic Noises County agenda. It was an agenda to benefit the citizens of Noises County, and nobody did it better than the three of you. I am, I wish, and I'm going to do it, I'm going to journal and write, to be held in a lockbox 50 years from now, so no one will get mad at us. But the stories that I could tell are priceless, and frustrating, and agonizing, and beautiful, all of it. And just when I thought that, you know, I was a master of the hallway, because I had been an advocate myself on so many issues, how, what a neophyte I was compared to the three of you. But I did the something that I am doing more and more as I become a middle-aged woman, and that is listen. I listened to Joel, I listened to Ugo, I listened to Patricia, and when they told me, let's go here, let's go left, we did that. When we needed to stay the course and stay straight, we needed to hold, we needed to speak, I needed to testify. And there is no way that you all can know how much the rate of return on the investment we made just six months ago in hiring this team gave us. But let me put one thing in perspective, because it got, it just gets glossed over, we don't have the time. The rate of return on these three individuals is going to produce over $30 million in Medicaid funding, supplemental funding for this county, and it was dead. Dead, dead, dead as a doorknob. And I was literally crying. Crying because our county citizens, the most vulnerable, were going to be either turned away for service, or our provider was not going to stay in business. That's how serious it was. So when you hear this crazy acronym, LPPF, what you need to equate with it is a tremendous effort by your county to bring, because we're not an expansion state, supplemental dollars for Medicaid, which is our mandate. It's, as a county, we have to provide indigent care. Had we not gotten that, we would have lost our safety net. It would have created a, just a sinkhole of Titanic proportion. And I can't say that during the session, but I can say it now. I prayed every day that if I only could have one thing, it would be LPPF. So you know what I did in Austin? I never told a soul that that was the most important thing. Because if you tell them what's most important, that's the one they want to kill for you. But it was something we worked on, I can't even tell you how many hours, and it wasn't until nine or 10. It was till 2:00 AM in the morning, sometimes. So the investment that we made in hiring the three of you already produced the rate of return for the taxpayers, and I want people to know that it was not an R or a D agenda. It was a Noises County agenda. It's an agenda that I will always keep for the citizens of Noises County. There's no other way to run it. I want to emphasize my staff that didn't get enough credit. Maggie Turner's not even in the courtroom today, because she's taking care of the office while Monica is away. She's ill today. My chief of staff was up there alongside me tirelessly. And that's why we reorganized my office, because I knew this legislative session was gonna need a lot of tentacles. And I want to give thanks where thanks is due to my office in particularly. I also want to thank the chairman of transportation, Terry Canales, who is not our representative, but he acted in such good faith as a great neighbor of South Texas always does. And because of him, and because of Senator Larry Taylor, we were able to expand our reach in many arenas, and I was really grateful. I think these types of relationships are gonna pay huge, huge dividends. I also want to thank our tax assessor collector, Kevin Kishnik, who worked tirelessly on some of the unsung and hidden agendas that are often there to cause horrible quagmire for counties. And Kevin just was his own one-man show, and just did amazing work. And the legislation that we promoted for tax purposes was able to become law, and those that we needed to defeat, we were able to defeat. I want to also thank, she's not here, Kara Sands, who also worked on behalf of the County Clerks Association. And so many efforts that they had that were really important. And the one thing, Joel, you said, we've got to do a better job. Also Sheriff Hooper's with us. There were really important criminal justice issues, the district attorney's office. We didn't talk about the domestic violence. Matt, are you still here? Matt Manning? He left, he had to leave, sorry. But the district attorneys worked with Abel Arreto's to create a very important domestic violence for our veterans in the room. We worked on a burn pit registry with Representative Arreto's office. I mean, and the list goes on and on. What you don't see is all of these tireless efforts to create a better community. But what we're going to do, and what we've started, is we've joined the big boy league, or big girl league, depending on who you're talking to. We are now acting like an urban county. We belong at the CUC's table. We aren't doing things like somebody that looks like they don't belong. We have a real legislative team, a real agenda. Everybody knows who we are when we go to the Capitol, everybody. And we reach across the aisle both ways, and it is just a tremendous effort. And so I want to thank all members of Noises County departments and staff who join forces. But make no mistake, whether it's Kara at the county clerk, or Kevin at the assessors, or Sheriff Hooper, we're one team. So your agenda is our agenda. So that's how we're, and same thing with MHID. If you have an agenda item that impacts behavioral health, we're gonna have one encompassing team and one plan. And lucky for us, our friends at Port Corpus Christi, Port Aransas, some of the smaller drainage districts, we all got together. This had never been done before. So I normally do not believe in tooting our own horns, but thank you, commissioners. Thank you for believing that this was the right thing to do. It had never been done before, because philosophies have changed. And I just thank you so much for that. There's two things I ask as a call of action for the three of you and for this commissioners' court to consider in an upcoming agenda. We need to be relevant across this state. We need to have our South Texas folks on important boards and commissions. We are currently underrepresented across the board. We need the governor and his nominations and appointments team to understand that we have amazing candidates that we seek to bring forth for consideration. I'd ask that you begin on this process immediately. In addition, in the next 12 months to 24 months, I expect that this county will have over $200 million worth of requests for grants. There is no way that we can do this without the three of you. We just simply have to divide and conquer. The grants are gonna be both federal, state, and some local. And we will unveil those in the next, you know, calendar year, and they're Restore, Rebuild, NIFWIF, GOMESA, CDBG, et cetera. And all of them need shepherding, all of them. That's the difference between this administration, and it's not a criticism on anybody's before, it's what the time requires. It isn't that they did it wrong before. Hear me clearly. It is not that they did it wrong before. It is that today requires a different act. And so we go forward. So I look forward to seeing you many, many times in the next coming months. And again, from the bottom of my heart and all the strength of my mind, you all really did the heavy lifting. And the maneuvering and all the tricks of the trade were appreciated and have been documented in my secret diary, and I cannot wait to reveal into the next generation, this one's right for you, Ugo, how we did it. But we saved the Port of Corpus Christi. And it might be under attack again, but not on my watch. They can try that with somebody, with some other judge, but I hope they hear me, not with me here. And will not, will not happen under my watch. But make no mistake, our friends across the bridge are our friends and our neighbors, and I extend to them my friendship and my offer of help on all the important issues of our time. And we need to leave this one in the rearview mirror. So thank you all so very much. I appreciate it.
Judge, one personal item here, and I just want to say thank you, guys, for helping push the Jack bill.
Thank you.
Yes.
Judge, real quick, a couple of things.
Sure.
On the initiatives that we're proposing to y'all, and we got away from it. Years ago, and of course, we're recommended, we would host a legislative day for staff and all that. We got away from that for whatever reason. I don't know what, but between the chamber, and the city, and the county, and all the state, the university, we used to have a legislative day in Corpus Christi to highlight who we are and this and that. We used to have it also, a very significant Corpus Christi day in Austin. I like the idea that the county is also doing its own. And obviously, we're asking for the opportunity for y'all to start looking at some of these things. But I think it goes without saying, all the other major cities and counties, I mean, they have the Real Grand Valley Day, opening part of the session. That's been going on forever and ever. But this is an opportunity for us, and I think with the leadership that is being demonstrated across the board. Now, remember, during the last legislative session, we had no mayor, we had no college president, we had no chamber president. And I mean, we were just, I mean, running from the seat of our pants. And so now, I think we, everybody's working together, everybody's on the same page. And I've gotta say this, I've worked with a lot of different legislative teams, but I really enjoy working with this team. I've known Joe for a long time, and I'm aging myself a bit. Patricia used to come lobby me when I was first there, and then she decided to work in the governor's office, speaker's office, and all that. Now she's back out, and she's a delight to work with. And, but again, this session, and I'm gonna just be very blunt, it was the best of times, and it was the worst of times. The best of times, your agenda speaks for itself. The amount of money that came down for Port Aransas, for the aquarium, saving our hospital district, the monies and everything, and the return on investment and whatnot, however you play it, it's huge for us. The worst of times is that, for whatever reason, and this is where we really, really gotta step up. I have never seen a situation like we've been seeing now for the last session, and this one in particular. We are besieged with a concept and a mentality that says they want to take away local control. Local control. As you all know, they passed legislation that says now, on your, any contingency fee litigation that you bring anybody in, now has to be approved by the attorney general's office and go through this process, taking that control away from you. And I kept reminding everybody that the last attorney general that was involved in contingency fees went to prison. Now, when you stop and look at everything that's being, that comes into play, they absolutely want to centralize all the government up in Austin. They want to tell you how much you can tax, when you can tax, in every form and fashion. I've never seen anything like it. And I'm talking about all political subdivisions. Not just one in particular, but everybody. I mean, they just are in this mindset that Austin can do it better. I got news for them. There's nothing better than local control, because you are the ones that are here. You're the boots on the ground, day in and day out. You see your constituents all the time. But I'm telling you, this is the biggest threat that not only the counties, but all political subdivisions face, and that is this consolidation of authority that has to be consolidated at Austin, at the Austin level. That's a huge mistake, and we cannot let that happen. And the citizens of this community and across this state have better start waking up to it. And as elected officials, you have a responsibility to also let them be known. Now, we all know for a fact that Judge Neal never missed his words about how he felt about some of the things that the state government was trying to do. Well, I think that needs to be magnified even greater, because it's coming, and they're still working on it. And of course, again, going back to the start of this session, it was a challenge, because number one, we started out with a new speaker. We didn't know who was gonna be on what committee and all of that. Now we've got a little bit of stability, although conceivably, we could end up with a new speaker on the next go-around. I don't think it'll happen, but I think the gap is gonna get closer. But then again, it allowed for the cooperation that we saw. We got away from, we got away from trying to engineer, social engineer things, and got away from those contentious issues, and got back to doing what we need to do, and that is work together and solve the problems for this state. So again, let me just say that it's great to work with a commissioners' court and a county judge that listens. Believe me, we've had clients that, you were in a big room with all the stakeholders, and we, the consultants, just have to sit there, because they don't even, they don't even yield to us. So we just, I mean, we follow what the, what the, what the client wants. I remember very vividly, we're in a big meeting with every CEO, every hospital, and all the consultants. They were in there all, everybody represented everybody, and when we got into talking about the legislative deal, first thing that she said, I'm gonna yield to my legislative consultants, and whatever they think they want, we think we need to do, that's what I'm gonna do. And, you know, that speaks volumes, because that's what we're paid for. And we'll always try to give you the best advice, and we'll listen to your advice. And sometimes we'll agree, and sometimes we won't agree. But we'll still do whatever you want. But that is huge when you have clients that'll listen to their consultants. And again, it was a pleasure to work for y'all. The, I don't know how much longer we're gonna keep doing this, but but again, we look forward to moving forward and doing some stuff for the benefit of this county. And for me, it's personal, because I live here. So I've got a stake in whatever happens to this community. And so, again, but I think from my perspective, and obviously y'all recognize it, we did have one hell of a team. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, so very much. And, audience, thank you for being so indulgent. You have to understand, we've just come out of five months where every single day we were in the hot seat. And this is our first time publicly to really get a comprehensive overview from all three of them as to what transpired, what the results were. And I thank you for your indulgence, but as a commissioners' court, because of the Open Meetings Act, we don't get to do this at all. So this was our one shot at it, and we're grateful for your patience. At this time, I'm gonna move on to MHID, and again, welcome. This is an update, commissioners, with regards to the collaborative plan for mental health. There is a lot of money, by the way, at the state, potentially, for mental health after this session, and you and I are gonna have to visit about that at a later date. Welcome.
I'm Mark Hendricks with the Noises Center for Mental Health and Intellectual Disability. So I'm gonna pass out some information to y'all real quick. Judge, you've already seen-
I've seen it, but go ahead.
It's the same information we presented to the-
Yeah. Mike couldn't be here, but Mark, we're glad that you're here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And you know, Sheriff is here. Why don't you give him a copy, too? You may have gotten this already, Sheriff, at the meeting, but if not, this affects us as well here at the jail.
Well, thank you very much for giving us the time to come and provide this information. Just in quick summary, what you see there in front of you, what I've passed out, is a cost-benefit analysis update report. The data is through April. We have not yet finalized our finances and expenses and things like that through May, and of course, June, we're still in. So this really provides a snapshot of what the dollars that the hospital district and the county itself has invested in this project as far as the return on those efforts. On the second page, what you'll see is just a general summary of the three primary pillars of the programs that are involved, and some descriptions of the services that are provided through those programs. So I'll just kinda cut to the chase and give you all the chance to ask any questions you might have.
Give us the highlight and let us ask questions. Give us the highlight and, and let us ask questions.
So, this project was born August 2018, so we're about 10 months in at this point. And long story short, it's cost a, a little over a million dollars, but our estimated savings through the delivery of these services totals about $2.3 million, which I think is a, is obviously a tremendous return on investment. We've served over 360 individuals through April, avoided thousands of, of days in jail and, and days in, in state hospital beds, which are inordinately expensive. So, just to kind of summarize, so you have some context of what these numbers mean, our key cost savings categories that we estimate for them really fall under the avoidance of hospitalizations and the avoidance of incarcerations and arrest episodes. So, some of, some of what the, that data is built on is, is average costs that when we try to keep those estimates as conservative and as local as we can. And so, you're looking at hospital avoidance rates of about $3,000 per episode, arrest episode avoidance of about $2,900 an episode. Now, that's in $2,007. That's from a Bear County Jail diversion assessment report that was done. So, we are not adjusting for inflations and 23% inflation since 2007, obviously, is quite a bit higher than 2,900 for an arrest episode based on that data today. But the long and short of it is, what these programs have done is provide immediate access to care for people who have, who suffer from mental illness and substance use disorders, where before, they were either taken straight to a hospital or, or to jail. And so, it, it really helps bridge the gap and create a system of care in Oasis County for those that are most vulnerable and need that immediate access to care. So, examples, I'm happy to field any questions you might have on, on the projects themselves or, or the specifics of, of the three projects.
I have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Tyner, I want to say this again. I've said it several times in the court, but it would be so helpful if we could get information before we get to the court, like a day, two days before, so that we can really go over the information, because there's not enough time to do it here, when it's just thrown right in your face, there's just not enough time. That's not your fault. But I would just hope that we would take note of that and start.
What we can do, Tyner, is anyone that's making a presentation, ask them if they plan on handing something out, that if they could, please get it to the court administrator's office, you know, by Friday before the Wednesday meeting.
That's correct. I didn't know they were bringing anything, Commissioner, and so I will.
But we'll go ahead and proactively ask next time.
I'm not slapping you on the hands. I just really want the information.
I got you, Commissioner.
I hear you.
I'd like to have a copy of the legislative agenda as well. Let me ask you this, because I know it started in August. And how, how many people you think were taken to a facility instead of a jail in that period of time?
So, our estimates basically for arrest or jail diversion, I've got that figure here through April, is 65 individuals of various charges. So, those are individuals that more than likely, as a result of our, our crisis intervention team collaboration, would, would have been arrested and taken directly to jail.
And the success of your taking them to the facility, do we have success stories?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, just yesterday, and I think, I think I see a representative from the Collar Times who met with one of the clients that we served and are still serving through our jail diversion program, gave a testimonial to share their story. So, you'll be seeing that in short order.
Okay. I'm hoping that we'll have a percentage of the success and, and those different figures is what I'd like to see down the road.
Absolutely.
And, and can you tell me the percentage of the cost that's spent on administration?
So, our fringe rate is 14.3%. And that is based, and as an organism, obviously, we're the local mental health authority and local intellectual and developmental authority for, and we say that not because we think we are so great. It's actually the title that's given to us by a Health and Human Services Commission. So, we're a unit of local government, so every penny is, is, is very well accounted for. And so, that fringe rate at 14.32% through April, ma'am.
I'm hoping next time I have more questions for you and I can get some data ahead of the game, but I'd like to ask the sheriff, has this made a difference? Can you see the difference that it's made in the last eight months?
I can have you on another agenda. I think you should come back, you know, give us a little time to digest this and maybe even meet offline. Let's just put him on another, the next agenda as well. It's worth it. Just so you know, I know it's time consuming, we'll make, for your convenience, we'll make you first, so that, that you can do that.
Judge, I'd also like to have like a breakdown of what you spend for police officers.
Okay.
You know, because I don't know what the city's putting into this, but I'd like to know.
Sure.
You know, how much are we spending for police officers to, to go out in the field with you, you know, do other things with you? I'd just like, I'd like to break down on what you spend for that.
Not a problem, sir. And we, we have that information. The Corpus Christi Police Department has dedicated a full-time officer to the teams, but we do subcontract for off-duty officers in, in after-hours coverage for the crisis intervention teams.
We want it to be a success, so we want to see the numbers.
Absolutely.
More specific. Thank you.
But total expenses, Mark.
Yes, ma'am.
Is for FY19 is 839.
Correct. Now, that is the raw expenses with our indirect, our, our administrative costs, it's 959.
959.
503 and 70 cents, ma'am.
And, and commissioners, I'll just ask us to place this as a holder in our minds, but I've had the opportunity to meet with the hospital district and you actually were given a huge appropriation. And so, what I might, my question to you is to really take back, is as we go through the budget cycle, I might ask for consideration that you not be funded anymore, because quite frankly, you're sitting on four years' worth of appropriations, which could really, you know, it's fine, it's, it's been done already. But as we allocate for fiscal year 20, I don't see a need at this, at this moment. What I, the caveat is, is that as we develop our behavioral health plan and center and village, of course, you can always come back. But as I look at expenses, the way I like to budget is what you use is what you should be budgeting the next year plus some contingency. And, and I think that we have now run the experiment, if you will, that the appropriation was not a, was not a, I was trying not to be so tough on it. It was certainly not the one that yielded what you needed. And, and, and that's a, you know, when we don't know, we don't know. But now, we do, we have a cycle that we can now point to. And I, I'm telling you this because that's my thinking right now. And if there's something that I'm not considering, I want you to share that with Mike and the, and the group, so that they can come back to me before a budget. Because right now, my mentality is that you're sitting on three years' worth of allocation and there's absolutely no reason the hospital district should be giving one more dollar for this program at this time with this plan. And I hope you hear me and read the tea leaves.
I see, like Judge, you know, right now, a million dollars would have been your budget for this year almost.
And they appropriated six.
So, I think it should have been like a five-year contract, maybe, you know?
Well, and this is, Mark, just listen to it, because none of these are for, for criticism for you or for, it's just to articulate it publicly.
But if you care a little bit different, then.
That's right. That's right. But I'm, I'm very excited that as I, you know, have talked to you in the past, as this commissioners court embarks with the hospital district on a behavioral health comprehensive plan for our future, my goodness, we already got a head start. So, here, this also, thank you. Thank you for giving us the ability to at least have data. I'm excited to tell you all that I'm, that we've already received one proposal from Leon Evans and his group, and we're going to be talking to the Meadows Foundation, like I think today or tomorrow, getting a proposal from them as well. This will help us create these plans that you need. But we've started and we couldn't have done it without you guys, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there, are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much for the receive, there's no action here, commissioners. At this point, I'm going to call Scott up. Hi, Scott.
Hey.
Coastal Parks Director. Going to talk to us about the management of the Clayburg property and the habitat restoration. This is our 3,600 acres that's fee titled to Oasis County, but is physically situated in the geographic boundary of Clayburg. So, don't get confused, commissioners, we own this property, it's just geographically in Clayburg.
Yes, ma'am. It's the top one there, it says Clayburg. I got a little PowerPoint here. And in keeping with tradition, Commissioner Vaughn, I'm going to move fast with a lot of information, so you're going to have a lot of questions. So, the Clayburg property, I don't think anybody other than Commissioner Gonzalez was on the commissioners court when we purchased this property, if I, if I'm correct.
And the only, only one that voted against it.
Okay. Well, you know, I can't say I was fully in favor of it at the time either, you know? So anyhow, what happened was is that we had this 3,680 acres, 4,000 if you take, 4,000 oh, if you include the text on easement with Parkway 22, that at the time, Commissioner McComb, who was in office, worked with Land Commissioner Patterson, Jerry Patterson at the time, to get some money from the Edgar Shell Foundation to purchase the property. We got a grant of a million dollars. We purchased the property for 625,000. We allocated 75,000 of that to Constable Sherwood to establish another constable. We had a small, I guess, what I call it, an interlocal with the Clayburg County, to be able to patrol down there and issue tickets for driving in the dunes, doing stuff like that. All that money goes to Clayburg County, Kingsville County seat over there, we don't see any of that. But it's helped to curtail a lot of things that have been happening over there. And, and the audience with me today is Callan Price and Camille. Callan is our natural resource specialist, as well as Camille. Callan has a bachelor's in ornithology and evolutionary biology, and Camille just graduated her with her master's in environmental science and also representing some of the agencies that we work with, this Mary Kaye Grupa with US Fish and Wildlife. And so, so, okay, that's kind of the history real quick, I'll go to, get into it. So, let's see, there we go. So, the overview, 3,680 acres, there's really no current public access features. It's, it's a really, I know you recognize this, Judge, and I think you do as well, Commissioner, it's a really unique opportunity for us to do something really amazing out there. And so, we've been managing it kind of carte blanche, nobody asked us to, and in official capacity Coastal Parks has for five years. And so, I recognize, when we got this property, there were a lot of people that were very angry with us. They, a lot of agencies, they were like, God, the county's going to develop it. Well, our deed restrictions will not allow us to do any of that. So, it was a lot of work for a year after we got it to rebuild those, those gaps, those bridges with the regulatory agencies and the NGOs out there who didn't think we had the capability of managing appropriately. And I think we've demonstrated that we have. So, it's, it's a very unique environment. So, there's kind of an overview for you, I won't go in and read it all. And then, this is kind of a, this gives you a, a snapshot of just, it's a real busy map. And so, if you look at it, if you're going to Padre Island National Seashore, you drive right through this property. The Jones family has a property to the north of us, they're the same people who deeded Padre Bay Park to us, as well as Paco Channel Nature Park. And then, to the south of us, our neighbor is PENS, Padre Island National Seashore. So, this kind of map kind of shows you what's going on. We've got, you know, we had an old unofficial shooting range out there, we've had some, a dump site that was out there. We, these, if you look at this map, you see these access points, these aren't official access points. These are basically points where people uninhibited and unpoliced were driving into the property and having human use impacts on it. There's an old oil pad site out there. It's really unique because it was after we got the property, we went out there, Mary, Mary Kaye was with us, we went out there and looked at it, there were these huge tank batteries. Judge, I'm sure you were familiar with, where that is. And so, we're, we're, we're out there checking it out one day, and it was sometime that, later on that year in the fall, I'm going to PENS to go pompano fishing, and I look over there and it's all gone. The railroad commission came in and took it away from, you know, took it all down, which is good for us, it saved us a bunch of money. So, I thought that was kind of funny. But, and then, so this map here, I'll, I'll make sure you guys have a copy of all this. It just kind of shows you the different things that are happening out there and stuff that we're dealing with. So, the, and this is just kind of an overview of what we've been doing over the past five years. So, the key elements on to conservation efforts here are the Brazilian pepper tree. It's a very invasive tree that is actually damaging a lot of our native habitats along in, in the coastal bend, actually basically from up around, what is it, up around the Galveston area on south to the valley, and it's even worse in the valley. Burrowing owl habitat, this Gulf Coast Conservation Initiative, that was done with the grant, I'm going to get into all these real briefly, bowl restoration, fire management plan, the agencies, and Long Star Unmanned Aerial System. I don't know if y'all know who those are, that's the drone program over A&amp;M Corpus Christi. So, this is just an example, those are the Brazilian pepper trees on the left there in the background. These things are just, they're, they're nasty, they grow, and without basically cutting them down and treating the stump immediately after you cut it, it's hard to control these things, and it takes constant effort of going back and rechecking for resprout and regrowth. What happens is, is that the reason why there's such a problem here is a lot of people don't realize that they aren't invasive and they think they have a beneficial use in their landscaping or what have you. They're not, they're outlawed by, nurseries cannot grow them, you cannot sell them. And so, and what happens is, the way they propagate themselves best is birds will eat the seeds and they get scarified through the digestive system, and that's how they rep propagate themselves. That's why you see them under high wires a lot. So, there's a big growth of them. Right here, you can see, we've, we've mapped out an area where they're problematic on the backside of the Clayburg property, which would be the west side, and we're working on dealing with that right now. This is kind of just a, basically a, a budget of what we've been spending on trying to eradicate these things. The bottom three are projected, we have not done those yet, and I don't know that we are going to right now, we've got some other stuff we've got to take care of out there. But it just goes to show you what we've done as far as, and this has been done with a grant fund, so it hadn't cost the county a darn penny. So, just give you an idea there. This is that old production site, Judge Commissioners, that was out there, that railroad commission came in and got rid of all the superstructure and everything out there. Working with Camille, when she was at A&amp;M Corpus Christi during her graduate degree program, we did an environmental impact assessment, phase one of this site, turned up really nothing, so we were good to go there. That means we don't have to go into a phase two, which is mediation or cleanup or anything like that. And so, but we found a way and worked with Mary Kaye over at US Fish and Wildlife and the Eagle Scout to take an impacted area and repurpose it for burrowing owl habitat. Look at that cute little critter there. And so, these things, they live in these tubes, and I really didn't know anything about these burrowing owls. Athena Owl, I guess is the proper name, right? Athena?
Athena.
Okay. Well, yeah, burrowing owl. Yeah. And so, that was one thing that we did. And the, all these things are things that we've been trying to do to bridge the gap with the agencies and the NGOs and environmental groups out there to help them carry out their mission as well. And so, this, this critter here is, it's not, it's not a threatened species. I don't even think it's a species of concern, correct?
It is.
It is a species of.
It's not listed as endangered.
Okay. So, it's protected, but, so they like to, they like to winter over here in our area and they like disturbed areas. And so, we thought, okay, we got a disturbed area, we'll put in these things and it'll work great.
Excuse me, Mary Kaye, are these critical habitat designated species?
No.
Oh, okay, good.
It's not listed only as endangered species.
No critical habitat designation. Okay. Okay. Sorry about that.
No, ma'am.
That impacts a lot, so I had to make sure. Okay, go ahead.
And so, this was a coastal wind-based nest race, coastal wind-based nest race program grant that we got was from them to do the Opelmo Falcon, public warning signs and marker signs, you know, to keep people from driving in the dunes and to help us also pay for the Habitat Land Use Management Plan that we did for this property. And so, this is the Opelmo Falcon, it's a really cool bird, it's, it's very, very endangered. It's, it's critically listed. And so, there are two nesting boxes out there, one on the, the northwest corner and one on the southeast corner. These birds are really cool because, well, they're raptors, that makes them cool in general. But they, when they pair up with another mate, they, they need at least a three-mile radius where they don't have to encounter other couples, they don't like other couples. So, they, you know, they pair up and they, they do their hunting and foraging, and so, that's why they're so far spread apart. We're, I was really anxious about getting them established on the property, and I was in kind of competition with another one of Mary Kaye's coworkers, but I'm going to get them before you get them. And that didn't happen. But they've, we've seen a, a, an adult female, an immature female, you know, perching and hanging around the boxes. We're hoping that since Hurricane Harvey took all their nesting boxes out up on Mata Gorda Island, that we're going to get some pairs relocating down here. Island that we're going to get some pairs relocating down here. But, it's just, and we did what's called a safe harbor agreement before we set these, put these in. The safe harbor agreement allows you to be able to, and it's with the county, allows you to be able to say, okay, if we wanted, if there was ever a reason, I don't see why we ever would, if there was ever a reason to remove these falcon nesting boxes, you could go back to what your net was before you put them in. So, since we didn't have any there, if we ever needed to remove them for some reason, we could, but I would never suggest that we do that. Then, here's some of the signs that we've got out there that basically tell people, don't drive in the dunes. And what, the problem we had with that was is we met with Border Patrol, Homeland Security, Claybird Sheriff, TPWD game wardens, constables and PD. And because you gotta, you know, that's the city of Corpus Christi's ETJ all the way down there to the National Seashore. And the thing was is what do we need to do to help you guys to help us be able to do enforcement and stuff? And the biggest thing they had to say, kept telling us was signage. We got to be able to point people to signage, you know? And so, that's why we did the signs. The signs are a tenth of a mile on the beach and they're a quarter of a mile on Park Road 22. And on the beach, another thing that it helped us do, it helped Donna, us partner with Donna Shaver at the National Seashore. When they're doing turtle patrols, if somebody sees a turtle, I'm at mile marker such and such. So, that was another partnership that we had. The Habitat Land Use Management Plan, it's really an unofficial guide that basically got us started on, okay, this is what we're dealing with out here. These are the issues, concerns. Like, for instance, there's a formerly utilized defense site out there where they used to do target bombing for, you know, not the real bombs, but target bombing for the NAS Corpus Christi. And so, all these kind of things were wrapped up in the one document that we put together. They kind of helped us, get us started down the process of what should we be paying attention to, what shouldn't we be paying attention to. And I did all this not because the court asked me to, but because I understood the deed restrictions that we had. And I did it just to protect the court, the county, you know, to make sure we're in compliance down there.
Can we get all commissioners a copy of that?
Yes.
That'd be a great thing to have on our-
Did I give you one already?
I think I might have one, but I think-
On the agreement?
On this one. I think you'd want to see the plan.
Yeah, but I'd also like to have the agreement we made to-
Okay, go ahead and make it a comprehensive file electronically to all commissioners' offices. You can work through Tyner. Give Tyner one copy, then Tyner can get everybody.
I remember the agreement we had when we got the property.
Yeah, I mean, I've got, we've got the deed stuff from the GLO. And so, and so, this is the bowl down there. I'm sure you've heard of it. For you folks who grew up around here, the bowl was a place for people to hang out at and do lesser than desirable things sometimes. But, this is an area where we have a breach in the dune. And it's been a subject that a lot of people have talked about, about what are we going to do to restore it? I've got some ideas, but it takes money. And so, I mean, I think when we get ready to do it, it'd be a great multi-agency project to show how you could redo, restore a dune line that the GLO could use in the future if there was ever a breach of a major dune where you have residents that live behind it, stuff like that, like with a hurricane. So, but we monitor that. And you can see on that picture on the right hand, on the middle picture, you can see all the four-wheeling activity that's been taking place in the dune. Now, technically, under the Doom Protection Act, which is part of the Texas Natural Resource Code, it's illegal to do that. But, because that's in Claybird County, our Doom Protection Plan and our policy and our authorization under the act does not apply down there. There is, you have to have something established like an access plan or beach management plan. Well, that's in Claybird County. And it's a real slippery slope of how we would even do that, you know, being in another county as Nuaces County. So, I don't know all the answers there, but at some point, we'd, it'd be good if we could fix that, but I don't know how we get there.
Excuse me, Scott, but Sheriff, isn't this under our constable's patrol watch here? Is it too, is it too remote?
No, Bobby Sherwood does have a-
Yeah, I think Bobby does. Okay. It might be hard for him to get to, but if we had a-
We paid some money to hire one person-
Yep.
Constable to patrol those areas.
Okay.
Supposed to be doing it on a daily basis.
Yes, sir. He does. He's got, Constable Sherwood has one guy that's dedicated 40 hours a week to patrol down there. Now, he rotates that so people can't get an idea when he's coming and going. That's where all the tickets get generated for driving behind the line of vegetation that go to Claybird.
Gotcha. Okay, sorry about that. Go ahead.
And so, and then, one of the things that I had Callan work on for me in partnership with the National Seashore was to take their fire management plan and develop one for this piece of property. So, at some point in the future, we can use prescribed burn as a management tool. Fire is not a bad thing if it's done properly. Controlled burns are good for the environment. And so, you know, naturally, what we would do at some point, we'd hire a third-party individual to do it to mitigate if something goes wrong, you know?
Of course.
And then, on that note, I'm actually sending Callan down to A&amp;M Kingsville in August or July?
July.
July to go through a week-long certification program. So, we have somebody on staff who can monitor the person who'd be doing it, where we know what we're doing. So, and then, this was really unique. This was something that I really got into when Longstar UAS Unmanned Aerial Systems first opened their shop over there in that old Wells Fargo Bank right across from where the NAS Corpus Christi is. That's where they're at. When they got started, I really became intrigued with this technology. And so, I went to them and I said, how can we take your equipment and fly a couple of test spots on the property using every sensor you have and then go to Conrad Blutret Institute with Dr. Steric over there and have him process the data? Because Longstar can fly it and capture the data, but they don't have the ability to process it. They may now. They didn't at the time. And it was over 100 gigabytes of data, huge amount of data. And so, I went to Mike over at Conrad Blutret Institute. He had been working with a grad and undergrad student. We did a, an interlocal with them, I think is what it was, and paid them to process this data. And so, that we could kind of see, all right, do we want to go further with surveying using drones on the property or not? To me, one of the things I've been working with them on over at Conrad Blutret Institute is, is that I think that there is an opportunity for this property to serve them on R&amp;D research and development of being able to take a drone and fly out and map wetlands. If you can find a way to do that and it be acceptable, like to the core, with mapping wetlands using drone technology, you're going to eliminate, now, engineering firms don't want to hear this, but you're going to eliminate the ground truthing and the manpower cost with somebody going out there, you know, actually doing it. You'll have to have some ground truthing, but not to the extent that you have to do now. It's, you can do it for pennies on the dollar. And so, anyhow, that's something that I've been talking with them about. I'd like to see us get into more of. But, we did this. It was a great collaboration between two different entities over A&amp;M Corpus Christi. And then, this, my last slide right there, these are just a handful of the agencies that we've partnered with out there to, you know, kind of move it along. And non-related to that, at the top right-hand corner of the slide, you'll see that's our new logo.
It's fantastic. I was already going to make a comment about it. It's really great.
Technically, this is not dedicated parkland. So, technically, any decisions that are made with this property rely on the Commissioners Court. You know, I've just taken the initiative to do these kind of things because they fit well with what the NGOs and the agencies would like to see done. It's very unique habitat. I think, I mean, it's beautiful. You know, if you ever get out there and you were able to walk back behind the dune line, especially in the spring and in the fall, it's real quiet. You see all those mottled wetlands out there. And, I mean, there's deer, there's all kinds of critters out there. So, it's pretty neat.
Fantastic. Thank you for that good report. The 3,600 acres is just an incredible treasure for Nuaces County. Commissioner Chesney's precinct is, well, 3,600 acres is inside Fisher Chesney's precinct, I should say. And he and I have had some discussions, Commissioners, to bring back to you, you know, just some concepts of how we move forward with maybe some of the projects that Scott's identified through grants or other processes. But, just know that it's up to all of us to make some of these decisions. But, we might want to look at forming an ad hoc committee so that we can really just help facilitate getting the projects going a little faster than what we're doing right now. And so, we're, Commissioner Chesney and I are going to meet with Scott and continue those dialogues. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, and I think you'll see something on the next agenda-
Okay.
Based on what you've proposed.
Thank you. Are there any other further questions, Commissioner?
I have a quick question. Those trees you were talking about, you're wanting to get them off of there, right?
Yep.
Can you burn them?
Yeah, you can.
Ranchers do that all the time. They chop them down, then they have to burn it certain, it's a certain kind.
That's one method. You can get them. But, they're real resilient. And what they do is when they grow up, they basically toxify all the ground underneath of them to where nothing grows. And so, then you've got to be worried about like guinea grass and other invasive grasses coming in behind them. But, you know, it's a battle. We've been working with the Porteranses, the State Park. We help them out, they help us out. I mean, it's really quite amazing, the unified effort we have between agencies. And we call one or another up and we just go, yeah, I'll come over and help you, you help me. I mean, I like it. I don't, I never ask for permission. I just go do it. But, one other thing, real quick, is the GLO, when they did their Texas Coastal Resiliency Plan, they actually wrote into their plan to fund $500,000 of habitat restoration for this property. So, it's in their plan.
That's great. I just wanted to give you one quick idea and then we'll move on. And that is, you have such access to such incredible talent from our local institutions of higher learning through internships, through faculty. I'd love to see us develop a field guide, a field guide for both Florida, something we could sell very nominally, but we could sell it and all the proceeds would go back to Coastal Parks. I personally love learning, but you need a guide. You know, we're not all biologists by background, but when you look at the Alpamata Falcon or the burrowing owl, and in particularly, the birds are very interesting, but there's others, you can help a family enjoy our coastal parks so much more if they get excited. And we could gear it educationally with QRS codes on it, where the kids could link up to really amazing things. It's a fun, it's a source of revenue, make no mistake. But, I see it as a thesis or as a research experiment. I see it as being developed, sorry, girls, free, you know, by institution of higher learning and then allowing us to print it in a way that we could recoup our costs for the printing. Field guides are fun, they're educational, but we need to use technology as our friend. I don't see something super thick. I want to use QRS technology to link up. And finally, I don't want you to think that all the time you gave to us to produce the video for, say, the county is wasted. I'm working on an informational area, just like Hollister used to have in the malls, where you could see the beach. Of course, it was Huntington Beach. But, we're going to see Padre Island and Padre Baye Park, IB McGee and Porteranses, and not to leave our rural communities out. I intend to also loop in the rural communities, what's going on at the fairgrounds, the cornfields, the sorghum. And I think it'd be a beautiful visual for us here at the county courthouse. So, I've got your video and I'm planning on utilizing it. So, thanks for the time.
You bet Judge. And-
Okay, appreciate it.
And Commissioner, just know that Callan and Camille, they're a great asset if you need them, you know, for any project. I mean, the data analysis and modeling that Camille can do and the birding background that Callan has. I'm just saying, you know, I mean, we're all one team. You want them, I don't mind sending them to help you with something.
Well, and like I said, it's just an idea on the field guide. It's not a mandate. It's just, it's just a concept of things that I've seen work. There's a couple of advantages having eight kids. So, one of them is experience. And that's, that's one of the things I was thinking of for you guys. Okay, I'd like to take out of order Commissioners, number five.
One thing Judge, Scott, did our friend from U.S. Fish and Wildlife want to add any-
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I just didn't know. I just want to make sure.
Absolutely. Forgive us.
Oh, no, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mary Kay. I didn't think so. Sure, no, I didn't want to sit here the whole time, not get a chance to talk.
Thank you. Yes, I would love to say just one or two minutes that, as you are all aware, we have many threatened and endangered species in the coastal bend. And they bring a lot of tourism and they also bring a lot of pride to our residents. And Scott didn't mention it, but there are many other threatened and endangered species on our coast that is included on the Claybird property, one of which is a high-profile, the sea turtles. The public, as you know, loves sea turtles. We just, as of right, as of yesterday, we've had 184 nesting, nest of the Kemp's Ridley sea turtles in Texas. Eight of those were on the Claybird property. So, it's a critical piece of land for sea turtles. And Scott has been absolutely wonderful and his staff with working with Padre Island National Seashore and with my agency, which is the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and with sea turtles and other species. So, I wanted to thank you all, thank Scott and his staff for the fabulous partnership that we've been doing with him. And we're also working on some public education with signage for the beach to help educate the public as we are getting more and more sea turtles, which is a good thing. But, we're also having more interactions with the public that we, they need to be educated on the do's and don'ts because they are endangered. So, thank you. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to-
Just to kind of general, and first of all, thank you for working with us. And Scott said, we faced a lot of obstacles with the environmental community when we took this property over. And we've really spent a lot of time on the front end and hopefully continue to do so and making sure that they know that we have been true to our word on this property from the get-go. Is there anything else that you can think of that, you know, we can be doing to help with that or anything like that? If it sounds like it's going very well and he's working with you closely and we appreciate that relationship. But, if there's anything else you can think of, I'm certainly-
Yeah, we have a very open dialogue with the county and the other agencies. And it's just a very healthy working relationship. And I, the energy between Dr. Donna Shaver and Scott Cross is just like exhausting to me just to watch. They just, it's unbelievable. The things they've done in just the last few months to come together to address an issue where we were having these extremely high tides and the sea turtles were getting washed up behind the jetties. And then, we had the public. It was, someone said it was the perfect storm. So, they reacted, communicated over the weekends. And it's just been phenomenal. And I think if we just keep doing what we're doing, it's, good things are going to happen.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Mary Kay. Thank you so much. Commissioners, I'm going to take out of order, number, I'll get back to number four. Let's jump to number five to accommodate the extreme patience of the city of Corpus Christi. To discuss a very important interlocal agreement and a change to an action that we took a few weeks ago. And here to explain is Peter Collins and Pat Elrich.
Good morning Judge, Commissioners, Peter Collins, City of Corpus Christi, with Pat Elrich, City of Corpus Christi. Actually, just to be really brief, is we're just decreasing the scope with the, as far as the need for consulting on the radio upgrade. So, we're going to go ahead and pull this back and then we'll be back again with the decrease, the decrease in the scope for a consultant.
And Peter, just to be clear, you're asking for a motion then to rescind the interlocal agreement, but we'll come right back and get the right scope and ask the court to get, to approve the interlocal?
Exactly.
Okay, so, we have a motion in a second. Are there any questions for Pat or Peter? I want you all to know, I've had extensive conversations and I'm very satisfied that this is the right move and we'll be right back with the correct scope. Okay, hearing the other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
You're actually going to table it, right?
No, sir. It's going to be rescinded, completely taken away, and then they're going to come back with the right language. It'll, it's a cost savings to us, so we want this right language. Okay. Thank you so much. Sorry for the wait, but obviously a very important agenda item. And I believe just for the clarification of the court, the cities have already done the same thing.
Oh, yes.
Okay, good. So, we're all in it together.
We're on the same page.
Got it. Okay.
And I learned a lot here this morning.
You know what? Honestly, I always tell people that, come and sit. And you're a member of this community and as a leader in another governmental agency, what we do has a nexus with everybody. So, thanks for commenting that way. I'm glad we, you feel that way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll go back in order now and receive information related to recent meetings between the county judge and U.S. Fish and Wildlife and U.S. Department of Justice. Tyner, I'll ask you to chime in. I'll try to make this brief. I've got a cheat sheet here because I want you to know for the record who we met with. I'm sorry, I don't have the date, but you can tell us the date.
It was May 13th?
On May 13th, Tyner, Little and myself flew to Washington DC. And we were able to meet with two different agencies. One was U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the other was the Department of Justice. I want to give credit to Congressman Cloud's office and in particular Hugh Feick, who is staffer inside Congressman Cloud's Washington DC office for assisting us in having the ability to have these high-level meetings and also by sending a congressional liaison in the office so that we were able to have a member of, really a representative of Congress there at the same time. We've also, just for you knowledge Commissioners, sent a thank you letter and followed up accordingly. Let me take ADA first. You'll recall that prior to myself taking office, there was a letter written by this Commissioners Court requesting an extension of time to 2031 to allow our opportunity as a county to finish our ADA projects as they were defined by the Department of Justice. That request has been denied.
Yeah, let me explain that.
Go ahead.
That went out September 5th of 2018.
Right.
And the DOJ never responded to that. Why? They don't have to.
That's right.
We have an extension until September 30th, 2021. We have an extension until September 30th, 2021, right now.
Right. And really, it's not so much denied as ask us later, you know?
Right.
It really isn't, there's a great word that I'm looking for.
It's too early.
It's, it's too early. Thank you. Thank you. So, however, that's not all. And the, it was a two-hour meeting and it was quite lengthy and the, the meeting really turned to a much better understanding from Tyner's perspective and my perspective as to what their perceptions are about the work that we have done and they are pleased about some of the work that we have done. Tyner gave them a complete outline as to all of the ADA accommodations that we have made, particularly those that are technology-based, that are now being used as a model by other counties in the state of Texas.
And let me expand on that.
Please do.
Our relationship with the DOJ and what we're doing with our website has caused a lot of Texas and national companies for them themselves to become web content accessibility guidelines 2.0. To give you an example, our agenda builder system, they're working on becoming, and I'll say WCAG 2.0, but a big component of the DOJ is having our website accessible. And Lance, NIT, actually, they have an online link that any software company that wants to come and try to do business with Nuasis County, they just say, oh, I'm going to send you a link and answer the questions to see if I'll ever talk to you again. That's basically what it is. And it's a questionnaire that tests that company's software to see whether or not they can meet our WCAG 2.0 standards. So one thing we can convey to the DOJ, which I think that they were excited about, you know, our settlement agreement says we're going to be WCAG 2.0. Guess what? Anybody that wants to do business with Nuasis County has to be WCAG 2.0. And our website company became WCAG 2.0 because we required it. And we're, basically, I think we are setting the standard for software that has a public access capability to, I think we're setting the standard statewide.
There's no question. It's a silver lining and a gold standard for this issue, for this particular item. And they were very appreciative and complimentary, so that's the good news. The bad news is, is that at the time of the settlement, there was three attachments that I did not have a real awareness about. These attachments are referred to as IJ and K. IJ and K are a complete listing of all of the flaws that we have in, in our county buildings, but particularly really focusing on this courthouse and, that are lacking seriously in ADA. And so what I believe is the right course of action is for us to rethink our strategy and to try to, to tackle IJ and K itemizations as identified by the Department of Justice. And I've, we, Tyner and I had a lot of good brainstorming and, you know, opportunities to, to think about this and today's agenda item, Commissioners, is so that you can get comfortable with a future agenda item where I will ask that, that through Public Works, that we work specifically to target IJ and K. Now, within IJ and K are small, medium and large projects. And when I say small, I mean really small, like that coat hanger is too high. Medium might be, you know, a door is not wide enough. Large might be, you need an entire courtroom. So as we tackle IJ and K, I'm going to bring to you in an upcoming agenda that I'm ready to do all small. And I'm going to work with Michael Robinson and we're going to procure one person to do all small. Or maybe we procure ourselves internally to do all small. But make no mistake, we're going to go back to Washington within 12 months is my goal and to produce done I, J and K. And will you clear us? Now, IJ and K may not be a complete listing of all our flaws, but it is what they care about. And it's, because they care about it, it's what I care about. And I told them and professed that it is my personal duty to make sure that we have accessibility for all citizens that are disabled. But make no mistake, we need to get out of the settlement agreement by 2021. We have a goal and we must meet it. And so that's the ADA and I'll just want to take that before I go to the fish. Are there any questions with regards to that for Tyner or myself? Okay, we think it's a good plan and Juan and I and Michael are, are working on bringing this as an agenda item, but it's serious business and we need to fulfill our obligation to the Department of Justice. By the way, the trip, just for that, was well worth it. The second meeting was, was with the United States Fish and Wildlife and the Department of the Interior. I might add that the acting fish director is none other than Texan and former comptroller Susan Combs. She was not there, she's, she was only the acting director at the time of our meeting, but we met with Scott Knight, who's the chief of the Division of Financial Assistance, and Penny Bartnick, is it Bartnicki?
Bartnicki.
Bartnicki, Financial Assistance Ops, and also present was Taylor Poole as our Legislative Affairs Specialist. At this meeting, we went straight to the, cut right to the chase and they were aware of our situation with non-compliance on a US Fish and Wildlife grant. And I presented different concepts, but the one that I think was the most well-received and in fact drew a letter back from US Fish and Wildlife, and if you don't have a copy, Tyner's going to get you a copy of that letter.
I have a copy right here.
If you don't mind, hand that out. What this letter says is it invites us as a county to write down formally what I articulated to them verbally, which is by August 14th, we will submit a proposal to them on a solution that would allow our county to, maybe you can help me with the words here, but it would allow us to separate the, separate and, my gosh.
Excess?
No, I'm, you know, I only have like 50 subjects in my head. But anyway, we would basically get, no, on, on the other agreement, it would be set aside. We would set aside the other agreement that we have from US Fish and Wildlife and we would be allowed, if this is our proposal, to use another project to be considered in full compliance. Okay? So our non-compliance has to do with, let's call it Agreement A, and we're asking them to set aside that completely and to accept Project B that I'm going to tell you a little bit about. And that's the essence of the proposal, is this program that was originated back in 2007 is no longer a program that exists today. Therefore, if we were to pay them back, it wouldn't even go back to US Fish and Wildlife. It would go to the General Treasury. So this incentivizes them to work with us because they're not going to get zero out of it. And, and that's not what they want. They exist for the purposes of educating folks about fish and wildlife and for the, you know, environmental purposes that they also serve. So we explained to them that this was a win-win. It was a win for US Fish and Wildlife and a win for the county. And so let me explain a little bit about, I think you can all get the picture of you set aside this document. Now let's talk about the, the new project. The new project is really not a new project. It's a project that's sort of already been contemplated by Commissioner Chesney for Precinct Number Four, and that is to do a very similar structure on IB McGee that would allow for an observation deck and for educational resources with signage and you heard me talk about the field guide. Well, imagine a field guide that's living and breathing. So whether it's, you know, signage that has a code and you take your, your phone and you click on that, you take a picture of it and you click on it and then up comes the beautiful, you know, Kemp Ridley sea turtle and you learn all about it. There's audio. It would be, it would be a facility that's open to the public, that's free, that's substantially the same. We already own design and structural engineering plans and they would accept potentially as part of our proposal, this design and structural engineering plans as an in-kind piece of, of this pie. So you might ask, okay, so I would set aside this agreement, we would build what we want to build anyway in Precinct Number Four, and they would accept that as substantial compliance for what we originally said that we were going to do. Now how would we fund Project B? Precinct Number Four and myself have a funding concept, but it would not come from taxpayer dollars. You know, it would come from, well, it would come from Precinct Four funds. I'm sorry, that, that piece of it would be, well, that piece would, but the rest would be from an outside foundation's funding source. And it's not, that's both private donations, it, there's no named person, but we have, we've been, there are many companies that have expressed interest that are looking for mitigation projects because they're doing business as export business in the Inner Harbor, not, sorry, the Inner Harbor, in the, in the, in the port, in the port, but closer to Harbor Island. And so this is an opportunity to give them a gateway to build something. But the savings alone, owning the design and owning the structural engineering is very important. They really liked this concept, but they did not have the authority to accept it because it's just a concept. So the purpose of August 14th is to write it down in a proposal, to also coordinate with some of the folks like Coastal Bend Basin Estuaries, who are kind of experts in educational, an educational curriculum. And I told them, which I wholeheartedly believe, that 2007 to 2020, we know how to devise curriculum to, to work with technology for kids so much better today than we did back then. And so Larry Joe, Larry Joe Johnston at Coastal Bend Basin Estuary has agreed to help us and I think that's an incredible opportunity. So we'll be putting together a proposal, which will literally be a letter, but maybe like a two to three-page letter with a lot of backup data, including our design and our structural engineering that we already own and a, and then of course, to you as Commissioners, we'll bring that back to you so that we can put that forth as, as our proposal for Nuasis County. Let me say that my job, I believe, is to be a problem solver and to find a solution to what I think is a serious issue. And I believe this to be a very good solution because Port Aransas, as an affected Hurricane Harvey area, is looking for these types of structures to benefit their community and one was already on the books and we already have a head start with design and structure. The US Fish and Wildlife asked us about timing. It's really important that we don't have a project that lasts too long. So we'll also have to address timing in our proposal. I would like to propose to you as Commissioners that by July 15th, I give you a copy of the proposal that, that Commissioner Chesney, myself, Grants Department and Juan and, and Scott develop so that you have ample time before August 14th to look at it, help us tweak it and to go forth. As far as any questions, I'll, I'll field them at this time. Tyner, I'm sure there's things I'm leaving out. Again, a good meeting, a lengthy meeting. Penny, by the way, was the acting US Fish and Wildlife officer that was assigned to our account and she was, she was supportive of the notion. So that's very important. If your federal agency likes what you're proposing, you should say thank you and get that proposal in the best shape and form. And this reduces any contingency liability. I want to remind the court that it's not just 750,000, it's 750,000 plus interest. And that means it's a lot higher than 750. So if we can set aside one agreement and do something wonderful for Port Aransas at the same time and create a funding source, which we'll bring back to you, I mean, we're, we're working on that, I think that is terrific. As to the other grant, let me say that while that, while economic development was not its purpose, it's neither not its purpose. And what I mean by that is that grant, as I investigated it, was originally out of the Mineral and Management Services Department, which does allow for economic development. So the original intent of that grant, although it changed and although our contract did not say so, the original intent was economic development and it's done its job. And what do I mean by that? The government gave us 750,000, whether it was done correctly or incorrectly, I think we now know it was done incorrectly, it has done its job. It was invested and today it has a rate of return because it's already payout has occurred. Seven years of averaging $120,000 a year in revenue is about to come full circle. So from here on out, those dollars that were invested are now past its rate of return. We will now see a complete payment of, of that original 750 and from here on out, it's all revenue to our county in the form of a lease payment. I hope I made sense. You know, I've, know it, but it's hard to articulate all the different issues. So I'll ask for questions and I'll start to the left and then come to Commissioner Gonzalez and Chesney.
You articulated it very well.
Okay.
I think what you said was that Project B would replace Project A.
Yes, ma'am.
Project A would continue as it is in operation now. We will continue to get that revenue. Project B will be built to the standards that we were supposed to do with 750,000.
You said it so much easier. Perfect. And of course, this is only a proposal, right? They have to accept it. This is, I don't want to mislead the public or the press that they have accepted it. What I want to share with you is they were intrigued, they liked it enough to write me a le, they said they would consider it within three days and get me a letter and within 48 hours, Tyner, we had the letter. That's a good sign and it's, it's a very good indicator that they believe this is in the best interest of US Fish and Wildlife as well as Nuasis County. Is that fair, Tyner? I mean, please don't, I love when you pipe in, so tell me.
No, I, I really got the sense that, that they thought it was a brilliant idea under the circumstances. The whole first part of the meeting, I don't think that they saw that type of solution coming up. I think it was a relief to them because the direction we were going was not working at the beginning.
Right. That's right. Okay. I just want to make sure. Commissioner Gonzalez first and then Commissioner Chesney.
Well, you know, again, Judge, you, I know you a problem solver and, you know, I admire you for doing all that problem solving, but this is really a problem that I don't think we're solving. You know, this, the problem here, a wrong is a wrong, you know, and they, whatever they did was wrong, you know, and we did it against our policies, against the fact that we used to grant, like we weren't supposed to use to grant, you know, there, there wasn't supposed to be built a restaurant and a bar. The contract said concession years and we went on that because it was concession years and, you know, and, and when they signed, Michael Maes and the restaurant and the bar signed, they should have known better that they were signing a contract that says concession year, concession years. You know, for them to come back and sue us if we, if we say we got to leave, well, you know, they're just as blaming as anybody else for signing the contract when it says concession years and they knew exactly what they were building, you know, and, but also the agreement says we can back out of it in 30 days, you know, and I think, I think we should consider that very seriously. We're not in the restaurant business, we're not in the bar business, you know, some people go out there, get drunk, go home, they're going to blame, they're going to, they can sue the county too for having that bar there. The other thing is, he said in this letter that came back, if you look in the back page of the letter, he says that please be aware that interest in federal funds awarded to Nuasis County will continue to occur. I don't see anything in writing that says we're going to stop the interest. So do we need to get something from them in writing saying, you know, what you told me, we're going to stop the interest right here and we're going to put that aside?
I think that's a good idea. I'll make sure that Tyner and I work with them on a letter to, to clarify.
And even, even, even if it's, even if they put it aside, you know, it's 750,000, you know, evidently somewhere the people have been meeting and discussing this without anybody else's knowledge, but you know, you're coming, well, you're coming up with 100, 750,000 from donations of whatever, you know, they're going to give us, we're going to give them. Somebody gives you 750,000, you got to give something back, I'm sure. You know, I don't know what we're agreeing to, I don't know what contract we're going to give them, you know, and, and Commissioner says- to give them, you know, and Commissioner Chesney, for him to come from his precinct, $750,000, I guess, I don't know if he has or he's not, don't have that money, we need to look into that. You know, I just think from the beginning, this whole thing was wrong. And it's either, it's either right or wrong, and it's wrong. You know, I don't care if we do another $750,000 structure on the other side of the pier, the restaurant and restaurant and the bar is still there, and it's wrong. It was built wrong with the wrong monies, and it's there. I don't, you know, you can make, they can, maybe they want to, maybe they want to lose saying we don't get the money back, but, so what if they don't get the money back? In the long run, the county does not belong having a restaurant, and that, and that's not, we're not making money from that restaurant. I know that, you know, you're going to hear, well, we're making revenue. Six months out of the year, we made at least $5,000, $6,000, $7,000. You know, the other ones we made, you know, we made $12,000. So how are we making money? You know, if we're supposed to pay us $12,000 a month when they're paying us only $5,000, $6,000, and $7,000. So really, the revenues that are supposed to come in are not coming in. And if they are coming in, well, that goes, that should go to Coastal Parks, and we reduce our money that we give them, a million point four. You know, why are we still giving them a million point four if they're making all this money? And it goes back to Coastal Parks. You know, I don't understand that, and I think while ago, you also mentioned some revenues for that new land, you know, I'm going to go back because it's kind of relates to this thing here that goes back to Coastal Parks. Well, maybe it should, but I think if we do that, we need to take back some of the money that goes to the general account. You know, I mean, everything that they make stays there, so why do we give them 1 million point four? So, you know, I, and I don't know, the county attorney has told us time after time, you know, how many times, she's written three or four opinions that we're wrong, you know, that we're not supposed to do this, you know, and nobody listens to it, and, you know, if it comes down to something else, I will not sign anything approving this. I will not be part of no proposal or resolution or anything, I'm just telling you now because that's the way I feel. You know, and I think that, but I think what you do, right, right, and wrong is wrong. So now we're trying to come back and cover up everything that was done, you know, and I, there's a lot of people to blame here, you know, and when it came to me to sign, it says concession year. When I see concession year, I think I'm going to go buy a Coke, or a Snow Cone, or Tangwich, or something. It doesn't say I was going to go to the bar and drink, or going to go to the restaurant and, no, it doesn't say that. It was misleading to us from the beginning, and I don't appreciate that, with me being to, you know, and I don't know who, and I'm sure Scott and you, what was going on from, you know, when they're building that bar and when they're building the restaurant, they knew what was going on, and nobody came to us. They came for an extension, but nobody said, "We need an extension to finish the restaurant and the bar." You know, they said, "We want an extension to finish the concession year." And that is wrong, that is totally wrong. You know, the question here is, is it right or wrong? It's wrong. There's no two ways about it. It's either right or it's wrong, and it's wrong. You know, I'm just, then you know that if it's okay to build a bar in a restaurant in the Coastal Parks, why not build one in Bishop? You know, why not build one there? We got, we got a 120% of there, maybe we can, I don't know, you know, now we can open the doors to other things and make excuses of why we can do it, you know, and why we should keep, you know, I totally am against this, and I think I voiced it before, and I've talked to you about it before too, but, you know, we're making a lot of plans here, and I wish we all be included in these plans that we're making. That's what I, you know, it's just Commissioners Court, there's five of us here, and I think we're all five should know what's going on, and we should be a cap of breath of what are we planning and what are we doing.
Yeah, and let me, let me just, I just want to clarify one thing that's very important because this happened the last Commissioners Court, and then the press only heard one piece of it, and that's, and it wasn't the caller, Tim, so it was the, it was the media, but it was the news media. But I have absolutely no, I've had zero discussions, I don't have any promises made on those dollars. All I know is that there is a real reason that exists for the energy and petrochemical industries to mitigate the work that they're doing and the work that they will be doing to move the 3 million barrels of crude that are coming in the next five years. And they're looking for projects that enhance the community. That's what they do as a model in other communities. This project at IB McGee in Port Aransas was already specked. I'm going to let Commissioner Chesney talk about it, but it's better than you think. It's not like we're, the idea is simply to explain that there's something, there's a location and a concept at a, at a place that's Hurricane Harvey affected that would be perfect to do this swap. And swaps are done all the time in government agencies, and, but I want to be real clear, I don't, I haven't had any meeting with any foundation, haven't had any meeting with any agencies or any industry partners, but I know that the opportunity exists to get, you know, a good piece of that funding, at least I believe that. I think, obviously, I'd have to be a strong advocate for it, but I don't want you to think that we've had any other meetings other than mine with Commissioner Chesney to give him the, well, so that I could know what was available at that location. That's all.
And you know, Judge, and I welcome any kind of projects they can bring, you know, but, and we have room for a lot of projects at Coastal Parks, and like we do in, you know, in Bluntford and Bishop and everywhere else, and, you know, it's all directed to that area, maybe because of the hurricane, I don't know.
Yes, it is.
But we've got projects all over the place that, because of the hurricane, we've got all these projects, so why not that one of those projects be extended that way?
And you know what? That's, I wasn't joking when I said we need our legislative team to put together our consortium. I said $200 million worth of grants. $100 million is going to go one way, and $100 million is going to go another. And it's really very important what you say, and I believe in it. It needs to be for the whole county. But this particular issue is definitely Hurricane Harvey affected. It was destroyed completely, and our goal is to rebuild IB McGee.
But that restaurant wasn't part of the hurricane, Judge. You know, that bar and restaurant wasn't.
No, no, that's at Bob Hall.
Yeah. I'm just saying that part wasn't part of that hurricane, so we know, but it was built anyway.
Right.
So, you know, I just.
Well, and Loudock, I know you're getting up, I just want to say this real quick, like, no, 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 go. I just want to say that it did not get posted correctly. I'm going to, at the next agenda, ask you, please, so that we can address the legal issues that both Commissioner Gonzalez raised, that we can address it the next agenda, if you wouldn't mind helping me getting it on the next agenda so we can discuss the legal components of it. But that's all I was going to say. Sorry for the interruption. Commissioner Chesney.
Thank you. Judge, I'm not going to go through the inaccuracies of Commissioner Gonzalez's statement, because he and I have had that debate for a couple of years now. Just will say on, for the record, I continue to disagree with his assessments of this about 90% of what he said. Going forward, though, I want to make this into a positive. I am extremely appreciative of your attitude, Judge, of trying to solve a problem instead of just, instead of just throwing something, you know, out the window. I appreciate this. I, you took a project that was on my list, and you were able to come up with an idea to do something that I hadn't thought about, so I wanted to really just say thank you for that. I get that it's just a proposal. I wish I would have thought of it before. It might have saved some of these lengthy discussions that we've had over it, but I didn't. And that's why sometimes a new set of eyes is a great thing to have with a group of people. And I really appreciate your efforts on this. This project, you know, in rebuilding the IB McGee area has been something I've been working on now for a long time with a lot of frustration in regards to different elements that have nothing to do with this. But this has, this has been something I've been wanting to do as part of that reconstruction anyway, and for you to be able to figure out, be smart enough to look at that and say, hey, what if we did this, to be able to save two great projects for the price of one, and for us to continue to get revenue from the situation that we are getting now, and we are, it is generating revenue, and it is not only just a revenue generator, it's become a very important part of the island and the community there. We have constant raves on how great it is and how much people enjoy it and how our visitors enjoy it, the people that stay at Pottery Valley Park, how they use it continually, they can walk over and have dinner and do their thing, and I think that's very important. So again, I just want to end this on a positive. I don't have a lot more to say about it other than thank you. I know, I know we're not out of the woods yet, this may not work, they still could tell us no, and we could be right back to the situation where we have to, you know, make some tough decisions, but, you know, the people in Port Aransas, I think, will love this project if we're able to get it done, if we're able to make this as a swap, that's even a greater thing for the county. But this is a neat opportunity for those folks who are desperately continuing to rebuild and search, and in regards to some of the things that Commissioner Gonzalez says, if there's other projects in the other part of the county that need to be looked at for extensions or whatever he's talking about, I'm not sure, I'm open to that too. I'm just working on this because I know how devastating the hurricane was on Port Aransas and still is. And again, I always take that opportunity, you know, here or anywhere else I go, to remind people that it's not over out there in Port Aransas. They've still only got about 50 or 60% of what I call the inventory in Port Aransas that used to be there as far as sustainable living. And they do have, you know, restaurants and places out there that aren't open. They have, we have an RV area that isn't open, and we need to get that open because that's a big source of visitors for our economy and for Port Aransas. And so I always like to take an opportunity to plug for people to go to Port Aransas, please go eat out there, please go stay out there, please continue to spend your money because even though it's almost been two years, which is hard to believe, since that hurricane, they are nowhere near out of the woods. They're coming back great, they're a strong community, and they're doing well. So a project like this will be, something I think will be very, very, very awesome. And yes, some of the, and I appreciate also, Judge, your willingness to use some of your funds to potentially help me with that because that will help me to move it along quicker if we're able to do it because it was definitely on my list. But it's like anything else, we've only got so much money to spend in our precincts, and I'm trying to figure out how to spend it wisely, and you to agree to help with that is, means a lot, and mean a lot to the residents of Port Aransas and the island. And so thank you for that. So that's really all I have. I appreciate it. I think you've done a great job in keeping us informed. I mean, this meeting only just occurred, and I, you know, I think it's, I just, I'm just, I can't say enough how impressed I am with your ability to take a problem and try to fix it because, yeah, it definitely is a project, a problem. And I think it's also important to note that that original grant did have the fact that this was supposed to allow for economic development, and now, you know, that was in the original grant, and for some strange reason, so there's not, it's not just all our fault, there's some, there's some, you know, there's, there's some play here with the federal government on this stuff too because they did have it in the original grant, that we could do this for economic development, and then some things switched, and now it's not around. And so there's been some confusion on their part too that have added to this. But the one thing I do agree with Commissioner Gonzalez on in this is we definitely have some fault in this, and we're trying our best to fix it and not throw the baby out with bathwater, if you will, and I appreciate your efforts, Judge, and I'll just move on from there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Absolutely. Absolutely. Go ahead.
The running news and the incomes, you know, just for the record, if last, fiscal '18, six of those months were under $12,000. $8,000, $5,000, $5,000, $8,000, we're not making the $12,000. In 2019, we had $11,000, $8,000, $5,000, $6,000, $6,000. So we're not making the money we're supposed to be making. I mean, you know, I mean, this is from the auditor's office, you know? I mean, so we're, I'm sorry, but I don't see the money coming in, so, thank you.
Judge, I have a comment.
Okay, absolutely.
Because of that concern, Jag, I think we need to look at the agreement, see what the agreement said. But I would just like to say this, you know, we make mistakes, and whoever it was, the lawyers, the court that was in here at the time, the mistakes made. So we can do a couple of things. We can just pay that $750 back or whatever, more than that now, and demolish. Do we want to do that? The building's there, and if we can do and repurpose it and go to the other one, it just makes sense to look at the other issues, the other, the things that you've done, you've looked at, I think it's great, and I think we've got to do that, and we've got to try and make the wrong that we've done corrected. So, but Jag, I do understand your concerns because I think it was kind of snuck in and don't know why, they did it like they did, it should have been done upfront, someone should have caught it, but they didn't catch it, so now we got to fix it.
And it can never happen again, and we pledged that it would never happen again. And the way you make that never happen again is that you work with your county attorney's office, you work with your auditor's office, you work with compliance. Well, you know, outside auditors, but outside auditors should have caught this in a compliance review. Major grants over, maybe I, maybe that's a policy that we can have, grants over $250,000, you know, get put on the external audit review to be completely reviewed for compliance. That's how other political subdivisions do it. I don't know why this one wasn't caught, but again, I don't want to go backwards, I want to go forwards. I hope that was a good briefing for you. Please use Tyner as a resource, he was there. Also, forgive me, Scott, you made that trek, you came in from North Carolina, I didn't mean to leave you out. You were valuable because you gave all the historical information. And by the way, just us being there, again, I can't reiterate to you how many times they said thank you for caring enough, for getting in the airplane, coming over here. We were able to talk about other issues that are important. Having Mary Kay here to tell us that we're doing a good job, you want to have a great rapport with your federal agencies, period. We have a lot of, you know, length to us, there's a lot of, there's a lot of great projects on the horizon, so we want them to think that we are doing good things, and so that's very important. Okay, again, no action item there, Commissioners, but I will keep it on the agenda for next time to discuss it as well in executive session, if need be. Remember, we did five, so I'm going to jump to six, and this is an adoption of an order to set term limits for non-statutory boards and commissions. You've kind of gone over this in our workshop. I think it's a, it's a motion that we're asking for at this time. Tyner, do you want to remind us what the term limit is for the audience?
What we did was, I took what the court recommended. What we have is no more than 12 consecutive years on the board to which they're appointed.
Okay.
When they term out, after 12 years, they can serve on any board, any other board, immediately. If they want to serve, though, on the same board, they need to sit out one complete term.
Okay.
If the 12 years expires for some reason during their unexpired term, the order provides that they get to go ahead and serve to the end of their term, their regular term.
Okay, sounds good. Are there any questions on this? Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion?
This discussion, I would like to make sure that we send this, you know, to the boards.
Oh, yes.
And we send it to our constitutional boards so that they know that this will be something we will be doing, assuming the court stands pat on what it's, for me to do, that we will be doing this at the next legislative session too, so that everybody's on notice that this is something we're doing across the board, no pun intended, or actually pun intended.
That's a.
So across the board, so that there's no, you know.
And also, don't just send it to the boards, like, for example, if it's, send it to the agency as well, so like if it's.
Whoever.
Send it to everybody so they know. Okay, I've got a motion and a second.
Just to be clear, this, this order is just for the non.
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct. He's just saying as an FYI. We'll make that distinction. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay, and now we're at number seven, and that's to discuss and approve with or without changes the job description for the Director of the Commissioners Court Administration. And I think there was a tweak. Julie, take us away here.
First of all, I understand we want to rename it to Nuasis County Manager.
I have a problem with that.
You have a problem with that?
Just, I guess just go through everything and then let him, or let any of us go through anything. Or, no, I'm not trying to cut you off at all.
No.
Jump in there, my bad, my bad.
You need to go as we go, you're going to read down the line?
My bad, my bad.
You know, so he says here, Nuasis County Manager, to meet him like he's manager of all the county, you know, and I really don't think that we should, I think he's, Commissioner Court Administrator, it's a perfect title, I don't know why we changed the title, but Nuasis County Manager, seems like he's a manager of all the county, you know, of every department head or whatever, and he's not. So, you know, I just want to make sure we stay within that administration.
No, wait, would it be better if it was Nuasis County Commissioners Court Manager? Commissioners Court Manager?
It's currently the Director of Commissioners Court Administration.
That's good.
Which is a little weird too, because that, so maybe it's Nuasis County Commissioners Court Director, or Nuasis County Commissioners Court Manager, or Nuasis County Commissioners Court.
I have no problem with the semantics at all, whatever.
Why are we changing it? I mean, what prompted this?
Because it's a vacant position. It's currently vacant. It's the Department, of course, of Commissioners Court Administration. The Director's position is still vacant, however, Tyner is currently filling in as the interim, but he's still in his position. the interim, but he's still in his position. So the Director position is currently vacant, and so I thought maybe we would revamp it to be able to attract somebody to fill this vacancy. So I've, I've brought it to Commissioners Court to decide how we want to structure this job description so that way we can fill that position, hopefully posted immediately.
You know, if you're going to fill it, you move Tyner up to that position, you know, I'm looking, I'm looking at the salary also. He's got a salary of 103,000. I think he should stay within that salary until he moves up. But, but I mean, we, because I know he took a lot of the financial responsibilities out of here, you know, he took a lot of, so if he's not going to deal with that, I think that the pay shouldn't be what it is now when, when Steve or Kristen were there.
But we already voted on that, though. This is not for that. In other words, we, we've already voted when we made him, you know, we did. We voted when we made him because there was that discussion.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, but she's talking about the new position they're going to do.
Correct. Tyner is still in his position existing in the direct, in the Commissioners Court Administration.
He's the act, right. So he's also getting the acting director's salary.
He's receiving a supplement to his salary.
Right.
So right now, the position of the Director is vacant. So in order to post it and fill it, I've brought it in front of you to decide what duties do we want to include in this job description so that I can post it and we can fill it. Now, it's not Tyner's job. Tyner will apply for it if he's interested and we can go from there.
I'm not understanding what you're saying, then, because my understanding was, I don't know what the, I don't know what the salary range is for this job. I guess I should look at that.
Right now, 116,000, what Steve was making.
I believe so. It was 116,000.
As the starting for that?
I believe so.
Okay.
So we're going to ask for a Director and change the body of it, take away the financial. I think that if we're all going to ask for an Administrator or a Director of Court Administration, I think we should go back to, you know, 103, 105 at the least because we've taken the financial responsibilities and what are monies left over there? I mean, I'm sure the judge needs to hire a numbers person, you know? And, you know, with the monies that are left over, about 85,000, if I'm not mistaken, you know, so, you know, I think.
Didn't we add some things to, did we take some of these, what did we take out and what are we adding?
Yeah, let me, let me go back, let me go backwards here. So Julie, the ask today, so that we're clear, is nothing more than identifying the job description for the, what we know today as the Court Administrators.
The Director of Commissioners Court Administration.
Right. And if that wants to be, if you have, if there's a will to change it to the Director of County Commissioners Court, is that what I'm hearing?
But it was just a suggestion, I guess.
I don't have a problem with that. What I want to allow, want to articulate is that the purpose of this is to reorganize that office. There is no urban county but us. I say this all the time. It's like, you know, it's like Elmo. One of these things is not like the other, and it drives me crazy because that's why we're not treated like the others. If you want to play like an urban county, you have to act like one. And in order to act like one, you need a head of your department who manages your court. In addition, you need some sort of a financial person or two, you know, an office. Typically, in other urban counties, you're called a county manager or you have a budget office, where the only urban county does not have a budget office. Now, if Dale were sitting here, he would pipe in and say, "I'm your budget officer." That's not what I mean. An auditor is separate from the person that helps the Commissioners Court. What I seek and ask for your support on is to allow the, what we all know as, I want you to forget what you know about Steve Waterman completely. That is a, think of him as a whooping crane. He is completely unique. He knows how to manage politics.
I would never call him a whooping crane.
Well, he's, he's unique. He's like an endangered species. He happened to be a numbers guy and he enjoyed the political circle, you know? It's very, very unique, but that's not how, that's best. We need a CEO type of Commissioners, of the Office of Court Administration that can work with all of us as commissioners and do the governmental affairs. It's two jobs and one part person. And that's what I think is the best job description that we have. It does extract the numbers piece of it, but make no mistake, your person that sits at this job has to coordinate the people that are doing the numbers. Doesn't mean he or she is doing the numbers, but it means that they are the CEO who has a CFO-like person underneath them. Does that make, does that make sense?
Yeah, and the reason I was, what I was asking was, okay, so on this job description, since I don't have a side-by-side, was there stuff, I get the actual day-to-day numbers, although it doesn't go away because you still have to oversee the numbers if you're the person that does this job. Were there other things that were added back into this job description? Were there things other than that that were taken out? I'm just trying to, I don't, I don't have the side-by-side, so I don't.
I think we took out everything having to do with the words creates the budget and I can, we can get a side-by-side. We took out the financials and we made that job description be someone who oversees the person in the office.
But this person's still going to be responsible for that because let me tell you, if this person is going to be the county manager, whatever we're going to call him, and the, and something's wrong, I'm not going to the budget person, I'm going to the county manager because it's, the buck stops with that person, so that's still a ton of responsibility.
That's, that's right. That person has the responsibility of making certain that the budget packets, workshops, and work is done.
This person's the department head, so definitely so. They're responsible for all of the employees within the department.
Okay, so, so we took out the direct responsibility, but we probably should have left in language, and maybe we did.
We did.
It says, but you're still respons, but this person's still responsible for it.
Well, I've got the side-by-side and it looks to me like we've added some responsibilities. Just looking at the page, it looks like we've added some, may have taken some out, but also added some. And I'll just be honest, I don't care what the name is. Whatever y'all decide is good with me. I don't care. That's just not real important to me.
This is a lot of responsibility. I mean, what, that's what I was wondering. I mean, to me, it looks like more than what it was before. So if it's, but I mean, you tell me, I mean, if, I'm, I'm, I am, whatever y'all want to come up with a name, I think we, I don't like the current name, but I didn't come, I didn't, I wouldn't have said to change it either because I didn't think about it. But I mean, I can understand what you're saying, Judge, so I'll support.
The one you said was perfect. I don't remember what you said it, but.
Nuasis County Court, Nuasis, Nuasis County Commissioners Court Manager.
Perfect. That's it. Perfect.
So that they don't think it does what you said, okay? So we can do that. I am fine with what these responsibilities are based on what the judge has proposed, and I'm fine with.
And it, and it, as far as the pay grade, it should be what the base salary was for the Waterman position.
It was at a pay group 44.
Forty-four.
On our Nuasis County pay.
And what is, what is 44?
103.
No.
I believe it's a little higher than the.
No, I think it's 116.
116.
I think 105.
I thought it was 103.
I think it's 105.
I did not, one thing I did not see is that, who supervises him?
Court, oh, good point, the court.
I mean, it says that he works with you on a project and so on, but it doesn't, we probably do need something that, that he answers to all of you.
To the court.
For purposes of the employment side, you know, like.
And I think, yeah, if we need to clarify that, then certainly I think this person knows.
Because he's going to be an appointee.
Right, because we're, the court appoints and he works with the court as a whole.
But see, but the 116 was because of his timing rate there, you know, right?
No, I think there's a base, that's why I'm asking, what is the base starting salary? What was it, when Chris, when we hired Kristen? I mean, what was that?
It was at a pay group 44.
Which is? How much?
I believe it's 116.
116.
Right, so.
Okay, well.
So wherever it's.
I have it listed as the one, as the pay group 44 currently. Now, if a current employee applies for it, they take their continuance pay steps with them. So it can be higher.
Yeah.
But that's, that's the way it is with every job.
That's any job here, right? I mean, that's the way it is.
You can't punish people for, for being here.
Right.
Right, so their longevity or their continuance pay does go with them.
So then, I'm good with this, with the change made for the name. What do we, and I'm good with.
Just one, one more thing, just for thought.
Sure, go ahead.
A number, is there, there's, we should put, I don't know if we should or not, put a line that says, "Any other duties as assigned?" Because.
I think that's fine.
Because they're not all, I'm sure they're not all here.
It's in there. It's in there. Other duties may be assigned.
Where is that at?
Right, on the same line as essential duties and responsibilities.
Okay, I agree with you.
That means, yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, so now let's have a motion with the amended job description and title with associated pay, and, and I'll look for that right now.
So moved.
Madam Clerk, do we completely confuse you or do we give you a good? Thank you so much. I've got a motion and a second coming from the right. And any more discussion? Hearing none? Yeah, well, both left and right metaphorically. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign.
Post this job.
I, I thank you, Julie, so much.
Thank you.
I lost my place, so I got to go backwards. Hold on, guys. Thank you. We are now at designate the Nuasis County Tax Assessor Collector as the official to calculate the tax rate rollback rate in accordance with the Texas Tax Code, Texas Chapter 26. Tyner, is there anything else we need to know about this? I'll take a motion.
This is the time of year we do that.
This is when we do it. Okay.
Second.
And motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Juan, it's your turn to talk about construction and a change order that we've got coming up.
Judge Commissioners, how are you doing?
Well, thank you.
Can I pass out a breakdown of the costs for the work, for the panels, for the, for the beds? Is that okay?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go to the waterline improvement project second?
Yes, ma'am.
It's fine. I just want everyone to know we're moving to number two, then we'll come back to number one. Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead. Let's do the McKenzie jail first.
Judge Commissioners, I provided a copy of the costs, well, there's two costs, one for the material costs and one for the installation. This is the cost for, for installing panels in between the beds. I think initially we came back about a couple of weeks ago to, or two, three weeks ago to do a change order to go from 144 beds to 96 beds. Since then, there's been some discussions with the sheriff and I guess someone else about seeing what we can do in order to still maintain the 144 beds, to maintain them. And what we've done is we've met with Turner Remidis and they've gone back and kind of did a sample or kind of like a mock of what it would look like if we would put these panels. I have some pictures of the mock. There should be.
Yeah, we'll see it on our screens here.
Yes, ma'am. This is kind of an example of, this is a steel panel that would sit in between.
I'm so sorry, we don't have them on the screen, Edward. Could you help? I think it's because, but continue, tell us while, while he's working on it.
This is a steel panel that, and right now it's, it's in a black color, but it's going to be painted, if it gets approved, it's going to get painted, powder coated to match the existing bed. So it's a divider between the beds, and this is to maintain the 144 beds. Of course, the cost is like 23,460 for the material, and then the installation cost is 91.65.
Okay, and so this is a stainless steel product, powder coated, rounded edges, I'm assuming, and what else do we want to know about the material? Philip?
Thank you, Judge and Commissioner.
Thank you, Philip.
So we, we, we went through, this is a mock-up that was provided by Stainless Steel Products. It's actually not made out of stainless steel, but it is carbon steel that will be, it's about, it's 3/8 thick, so it's very.
Durable.
Durable. It's not going to be a problem. I mean, it's thicker than the actual construction of the bed frames themselves. We were able to install it in a way that it's tamper resistant in that, you know, you would have to unbolt one of the beds to get access to the bolts. Of course, as you see here, it's, it is, you know, kind of in its black finish right now, but it's, will be ultimately finished to match the beds.
We can't see anything.
And the powder coating.
And just a minute, maybe what we can do, Juan, is.
I think you have pictures in here, don't you?
Just go ahead and distribute. Sorry, guys, we have a.
That's good.
Just pass it around.
Give it to Carolyn, to Judge, or to the judge, or Commissioner Vaughn first, whatever.
We, we did meet with, we did meet with sheriff and his staff, and luckily they, we actually were provided with a, a sketch, actually, that came from Jail Standards as to how to also potentially solve this issue, and this is basically a mock-up of that solution. And so therefore, we, you know, we feel very confident that Jail Standards, being that this idea kind of sort of was born out of their head, I guess, to some degree, should feel comfortable approving this. Obviously, before we approve a con, I mean, obviously, we're trying to seek approval of the change order itself, but before we actually go through and execute the notice to proceed with the contractor, we want to make sure we have it in writing. Of course, at Jail Standards, this is, is good with this. But being that this idea was, came from their office and how to execute this, we anticipate no real significant issues. I think, you know, obviously, in working with the sheriff's office and making sure that, you know, that Sheriff Hooper and his staff feel like the visibility issues are adequately identified and resolved to their liking, and that this provides enough of a barrier between the inmates to where they're not messing with each other, based on Sheriff Hooper's concerns of, in safety requirements, you know, we're, we're happy to try to continue, you know, moving this forward if, if the commission sees that this is a good and viable alternative to keep the bed count as was originally anticipated, while also, at the same time, alleviating the sheriff's concerns about inmates, you know, messing with each other or somehow interfering with one another during, during their sleeping hours.
Oh, it looks like a day bed, doesn't it?
Yes, ma'am. A, a little bit, Commissioner Vaughn, it does. And again, you know, while the cost seems like it's, you know, it's a pretty big cost, but it's spread out over 65 conditions where we're having to do that on top and bottom, so it's really double that, and it's, you know, it's, it's quite, it's quite a few plates.
Well, if I did the math real quick, it's really a very effective way. If you lost those beds.
Yeah.
The cost would be a lot greater, so.
I think it's a reasonable compromise, and I think, though, the timeframe here is I think it's a reasonable compromise and I think though, the timeframe here is a couple of weeks of fabrication and it's a simple bolt-on condition. So, you know, it's not gonna delay somehow the opening of the annex. We're waiting on a couple of other parallel projects to come online to actually move inmates in there. But as far as this allowing our portion of the work to be completed.
Doesn't delay us.
No, no ma'am. It's, you know, we're talking probably two to three weeks to where they can actually be in there bolting them together.
Does it meet jail standards?
Yes ma'am, I actually addressed that. I know there was some discussion about the images, but we, the sheriff's office actually received a sketch from jail standards suggesting this very thing. So this is kinda sort of born out of, out of a collaboration with the sheriff's department and jail standards. So I think it'll, I think it'll meet the requirements from their perspective, certainly satisfies our desire to, you know, alleviate the sheriff's concerns as well, so.
Do you finish Commissioner?
I'm good. Go ahead.
I don't like this. I'll tell you why. I don't know, I don't know why the sheriff changed his mind about this here, but I'm gonna tell you that to me, that's not gonna keep an inmate from doing things to the inmate next door. I mean, I worked in jails, I worked in prisons and, you know, I mean, they're close to each other regardless.
Yes sir.
You know, and that's not gonna stop anybody from doing. Now, now the sheriff and his staff are gonna have a lot of blind spots because you can't see behind that board. So now what, how you gonna, how you gonna see the inmate four rows down when there's a board there? He could be hanging himself, he could be doing something else, he could, I mean, believe me, if jail standards says this is good, I think we need to talk to jail standards because they're not, they're not the ones working in this jail.
Yes sir.
You know, and I think the sheriff's concern is gonna be his staff. And concern not only that, but for the inmates. Because, and I'm, and I'm telling you because of my experience working federal prisons and state prisons and, I'm gonna tell you right now, I would never authorize this to be installed. To me, it's not a safety, to me, really, it's not a protection or provider. The inmates, I mean, whoever works with inmates and sheriff knows and better, but the people in the jail know, I mean, you work with inmates, they are greater than you are, you know, and you're the architect.
Yes sir.
And they're gonna be able to know how to get around this thing here, you know, nighttime when the lights go out. You know, so if you don't have a monitor to monitor every single hall.
Yes.
And see wherever inmate inmate is. And I'm just telling you Judge, because I, you know, I come from the federal corrections system too, and there's no way that the federal system would even allow you to put a federal inmate on this, on this condition.
And of course Philip, you were just asked to design what they told you to design. Sheriff, do you mind coming up and addressing some of these issues?
I'd like to have a letter from them telling you this.
Yes sir, and absolutely Commissioner, to your point, I mentioned, we have to get some sort of sign off from jail standards before we allow the contractor to proceed in this, in this direction.
I mean, if sheriff says, you know, he's concerned, I mean, I support the sheriff because, I mean, I'll tell you what.
Before he goes, can I mention something too? Judge, I think it's important to note that jail standards approved this without the, without the thing. So they had approved that previously and the sheriff had some concerns which were very valid concerns, as did, as did I in regards to the, to the bed count. So I appreciate the fact that the sheriff is, has gone and worked with Juan and Mr. Ramirez to come up with something that alleviates that. I wouldn't mind seeing this go higher if we needed to, you know. I don't know what the sheriff thinks. I don't know how you can do that. I don't, I was, you know, thinking that this was might gonna be like a solid thing between the beds, maybe with ventilation holes in them, you know, things of that nature. At this, and putting these beds closer up to the front where the, where the actual security folks are. Because I think, you know, when we, when we all looked at this, we looked at it being 144 bed facility. I'm not sure any, I'm not sure anybody would've. Doing this for 98. So yeah, there it goes. But anyway, so I mean, if the design needs to be tweaked, or needs something to be done, but certainly if jail standards has to, this would all be contingent on jail standards approving it. But, you know, I walked in there and believe me, even the single beds, if they wanna mess with someone, they can get out of bed and go mess with someone. So that's gonna, you know, if people wanna mess with people, they can mess with people. This is a dorm. I mean, if, you know, we didn't build this with cells. And, and so these are supposedly, I would think, less violent offenders who just wanna do their time and get out for the most part. But certainly things happen in these dorm settings and we need to be careful of it. But, I mean, if using Commissioner Gonzalez's argument and taking another step, I mean, you could say that, like I said, this bunk, I was in there, this bunk is two feet between, two and a half, three, I mean, between bunks. I mean, it wouldn't take much for someone to get out of bed and jump over to the person without a binder, hit him in the head and get back into bed if nobody's watching them. So.
Design standards call for two foot nine separation between bunks.
Right.
Of clear space.
Two foot nine is, you know, I mean, literally some of those bunks, the single bunks, you can almost reach over if you're long enough, but it certainly doesn't mean you couldn't jump out of bed and hit someone. So there's no question that there's, you know, issues with all of these bunks in a dorm in a setting. But anyway, I, again, I appreciate the sheriff being positive and looking at this from a proactive standpoint and working with the architect and with Juan. If these need to be higher with some holes in them, I don't know what the right design is, okay? I mean, if you're telling me that's what you did because jail standards said this is what they like, then, okay. So anyway, I appreciate the sheriff working on this and I know we've all got concerns over safety, so I'll let you talk too.
This project, and y'all bring me up to speed. When, when was this planned? Was this 2014? So I understand, and I haven't done a historical perspective, but I understand this has been going on for a long time. And, and this is an unintended problem at this moment in time. And speaking to jail standards, I wouldn't be opposed, and I think it'd be a good thing to have a representative of jail standards in front of this court. Because I've, I've had phone conversations and email conversations with a director and for them to approve the original layout where these bunks were made it up, I don't get it.
I don't either.
But I would also say as a sheriff that I don't have to accept what jail standards tells me. Because I, under no circumstances would I have allowed that to go forward. Not in this, not in this jail. Because ultimately, it's my responsibility for the safety and the security of the correctional officers and the inmates. And so if jail standards is now saying that this is okay, I would like that director or somebody from his office standing here telling you that and telling me that. This is a minimum, and I know you've been there, and Commissioner, you've been there. You've seen this. Now, it's a little bit misleading because you're looking at an empty room. You're looking at a room full of bunks, picnic tables or eating tables and toilets and showers. When you put 72 bodies in this room, it's gonna change the dynamics again and it's going to be a dense population environment. Now, the inmates that will be in there will be low security inmates. They will be inmates that have been thoroughly classified by our employees. And we do a real good job, as the recent jail inspection demonstrated, we do a real good job of putting inmates where they need to be within the right group of inmates and in the right physical facility in the building. And so, yes, they are low risk inmates, but the barriers, and this is, I'm trying to accommodate all the concerns on this issue. 144 beds was promised to the taxpayers and promised to the commissioners and promised to everybody. 144 beds was promised and it would be, in the perfect world, we would like to make that happen. But it certainly wasn't gonna happen under the original configuration. It might be able to occur here safely. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if there's gonna be unintended consequences or problems with these barriers. What I can say is that if there are problems with this configuration, six months after we put humans in it, we'll pull the beds out. We'll unbolt them at that time. That's always, this is not permanent. And so, we might very well be modifying again in six months after we occupy it. There are three cameras in this dorm. Big problem with any kind of structure like this is line of sight problems. It's a direct supervision dorm. That means there is one correctional officer actually in this dorm with 72 inmates. 72 low risk inmates, what we think. But that's still one correctional officer in there. His line of sight will now be obstructed and diminished downrange because of these, we're just looking at one. You start, by the time you install all of them, there's gonna be extreme blind spots in that dorm environment which distracts from the goal of direct supervision dorms. But there are three cameras mounted on the backside. And so, yeah, there will be visual ability on the backside of all of these structures. At this time, those camera feeds go to the main console in the jail. And I have a problem with that because now we put more video demand, you know, for review on this video, on this console operator. And so, my intent is to get those video feeds for that specific dorm to that correctional officer who's sitting at the desk in the corner.
Right. That's a smart.
And so that's another thing, but that's down the line and I'm gonna need your help to accomplish it because it's gonna be another change order.
Could you add cameras in there also to?
That is something we'd have, as far as a change order like that, we'd have.
It could be done, of course Commissioner. I mean, it, it, it could be done. I mean, the ceiling is hollow up there. I mean, we have the ability to run whatever utilities we would need to.
Pre-wired.
It's a secure ceiling, but it's, you can't open it up and access it obviously with the right, you know, tools and the right vendor.
Doesn't make any sense for it to go to the, I've been in that console, I've seen that console operator too, and that's ridiculous. So it has, we have to set this thing up to where it goes to the guy or girl sitting in that room, or this makes no sense. And so that should be, if that's the next change order, then, you know, I guess that's the next change order. But add, add the extra cameras to that, that you need to cover, whatever you need to cover too, regardless of how many beds we in there. We've gotta make sure that person sitting in there sees this.
Right.
His room, her room.
Sheriff, I'm just, 100, I don't know, I know we all wanted 104 beds, 144.
144.
But if you're gonna give me 96 beds and more safety for your officers and inmates, I'll take 96 beds. Safety's gotta be our first concern. I don't care what you, I don't care how much money you do, safety's gotta be our first concern for the lives of the workers, correctional officers, and the lives of those inmates that we protected. One thing happens, we're all gonna be responsible because we allowed this to happen. You know, and I just wanna make sure that we, you know, when we, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote for that. I mean, I still vote against it, but, I mean, but I'm just letting you know that we gotta make sure. And the console, if there's an officer there in the console was monitoring this, there's a, there's a red button there, I guess, to sound the alarm. You know, how long is it gonna take for somebody else to get there when it's alarming sound? You know, do we know how long it's gonna take somebody to get there?
These direct supervision units are challenging. When I worked in the jail, I did not work in a direct supervision unit. And I think when the commissioners were with me the other day and you saw that and you realized the dynamics of having what might be an 18-year-old new employee. I know the supervisors put the talent where it needs to be and they probably wouldn't put that newly hired 18-year-old correctional officer in a direct supervision unit like this. I know they're probably putting somebody that's got some experience and, you know, some learning behind them. But still, it's a challenging environment. It's stacked in such a way with low risk offenders being in there. The barriers as these are, are installed are not so much to avoid an intentional physical contact between inmates, because that's gonna happen no matter what you do if they're in the same room. But they're, they're more in line with preventing the rollover in the middle of the night where you have just somebody rolling over on somebody else or touching somebody inadvertently and causing a disturbance. So it's not the perfect. And as far as, there are other configurations in our jail where they have private cells and they're out of sight. Another element is the requirement that every 30 minutes that correctional officer get out from behind his desk and do a walk around. And that's every 30 minutes. And then every hour, an additional correctional officer is in there doing a walk around. So there's structure, there's process put into place to minimize problems, but it's, nothing's ever gonna be perfect. And 144, if that's the goal, this is the way we get there. And at this point in time, I have enough confidence in the safety of this configuration. But if I'm wrong six months from now, then we're pulling bunks out of there.
Well Sheriff, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry Commissioner.
If you've got 92 in there now, you're at 144, do you not add another deputy in there?
And that's part of our budget packet.
Yeah, because that just makes sense to me. You know, I looked at this and when he was, when you showed where he sat, he doesn't have a clear view of everything, even there.
Even without these.
Even without the barriers. And so, I'm kinda like Commissioner Chesney, I kinda thought they were gonna go up too, so that you couldn't reach over. But I have a concern. After seeing this right here, I have a concern. And when you say in your line sight, I just don't see. And then his back is to them when he's walking in the other direction. And, you know, men are grumpy when they sleep sometimes. So you could very well have, you all, guys all know that, and they snore too loud. My husband doesn't. I'm just kidding. Yeah. But, I mean, I have a concern and I think we have to go off what you think.
Philip, kind of just, I'm trying to think a little bit out of the box here. I've been Googling while everyone's been talking here about what polyethylene product, what Lexan, what, is there a, such a thing? I mean, there is, but have you ever seen in the design world any type of plastic that is strong enough? And there's, there's definitely very strong polypropylene type products out there in the market that would give 100% visual but would still be a divider?
So that's a great, great idea. I think the only concern that I would have there from a Lexan, obviously that's a very strong product.
That's what I'm thinking.
You know, fighter.
What, I mean, Lexan is what I thought of.
And it's just that it's, it's scratchable. And so like if an inmate were to get a hold of, you know, something, a tool or something that they could engrave into that. But of course, they could do that in the metal.
Well, I was gonna say, that, what I like about it is that it eliminate, it gives us the visual.
Yes.
Sheriff needs a six month trial period. I would be much more comfortable with Lexan with 100% visibility than I would with metal. And, and I'm, and I'm just scratching the surface in two minutes. I mean, I'm, I could really get, we could maybe look for something. Sheriff, I don't know, I'm, I'm trying to think a little bit out of the box. If, if we can get the right material and you get visuals. Now, just so you know, condensation, HVAC, there are other engineering considerations. Would we get condensation and, like a fogging?
No, I don't think.
On Lexan?
Lexan and Plexiglas typically are subject.
Resistant.
To UV rays, and that's usually where you get a yellowing or a fogging.
Okay.
Obviously this.
No rays. Okay, good.
I don't think that's a concern Judge.
And sometimes those are expensive products, but look.
They're not that bad though.
I don't know that it's really, I mean, it's something we are fully open to.
What do y'all think about that idea? Is it sturdy Philip? It is. It's very.
I mean, that's what they're actually make, you know, like.
It's hurricane resistant.
Planes. I mean, they actually make the.
It's very.
It's hurricane resistant. I mean, I've got them on my windows at home because they're hurricane resistant.
Actually a great idea Judge, and we're happy to explore that and see if, you know, what it does to the cost and, you know, if that's something that.
I mean, I'm just, if we're gonna take a leap of faith, let's, let's take it with, you know, a clear product.
Yeah. And, and I think that's a great idea. I mean, obviously we're dealt with spatial constraint. Obviously, you know, 144 beds would be, you know, great if we could have configured them to Commissioner Jack's point, as, you know, single bunks, only way with the space we had.
Yeah.
Do is to, is to back them up. And I think that's the only reason why jail standards even, you know, 48 beds is typical maximum for a dormitory. So they, you know, this was actually a brainchild of, of, of coming out of the director at Mr. Wood. We sat down in Austin with him saying, look, this is the space we have. How do we get to 143 dormitories? And that's just kind of the way that the space works out. I mean, we can rearrange the chairs on the deck as many times as we want, but in order to get to that 144 beds in the current configuration, it has to be something like this, or you agree to go down to the 98 beds.
I like the Lexan. I think the clear, I think the clear, I think that's a.
And we're happy to explore that and mock it up as well and.
Yeah.
Since we're going clear, let's look at, let's look at.
Would you go the whole way?
Okay, so if we.
Right.
I know. But if we're gonna go look at the Lexan, could you at least look at it being like solid all the way up potentially? Because then if it's solid and you don't have the sight, line of sight problems.
Brent, if you look at the glass, by the time you get to the fifth or sixth one, it doesn't look clear. You know, you know that.
But Plexi is a totally different product than Lexan. Totally different. Lexan is a, I just couldn't remember the name of it, but I knew that it.
But I think to alleviate perhaps Commissioner Jack's concerns, I mean, we can mock it up on several, you know, we can do it on the lower level.
We'll actually do a test.
Look at it. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, we have the time to do that, I think, with, I think the anticipated completion of the fire alarm system is not until September. So we have, you know, we have a couple of months from which to do this. And I think any of those solutions, whether it be the Lexan or the steel, we're talking about probably a month duration to kinda put, once we decide and get approval from jail standards, sheriff is happy, the commissioners court is happy. You know, I think we're probably talking about a month to, from the procurement to the installation of these things. They're bolt and go.
And I have the Lexan on my windows and we leave, we leave them upstairs, on the upstairs windows all year round because I can see out them. Now, you know, I mean, you're gonna, all you're wanting to be able to see is someone sitting up in bed and getting out to do something. So I, yeah.
And I just remembered where, I just found it. I knew where I had read it. It was, it's used at NASA.
Sure.
And, and that's where they use it on the ship, on the rocket ships and they can, the demonstration is they can put a wrench right through it.
Right.
No visible damage at all.
Impact resistance.
Impact is phenomenal. So, look, it, it needs, we need to investigate a little further. And I appreciate jail standards being involved, but I'd rather have you and Pratt Design working on, you know what I'm saying, your mind works like Pratt.
Yeah.
And we need to come up with something like that.
Perfect.
Also, I want to echo what Commissioner Gonzalez said about safety first. I wanna echo what Commissioner Vaughn said about another person and what Commissioner Chesney said about the cameras. Sheriff, you are getting a clear indication that this court wishes to see from you, your requests, because we can't have it both ways. We can't, we can't give you no resources and get the 144 beds. We have to give you, if we want the 144, we have to be ready to give you those resources. So why don't, why don't we come back with the, what was it? Is it a camera, the console? What is, what do you wanna call it? A console change order Juan?
Yeah, it would just be.
Is that the right way?
The video feed from where it goes now to the, the main console to the.
I mean, we should do that for safety. For safety for sure.
That's like, that should be, that should be a no brainer. I don't know how that.
And, and will, will work, but this Lexan, I think is better than the metal, at least on a potential discovery. You might find an impediment here, I don't know.
No, no, no. I think it's a great idea. And I, and I think to sheriff's point about jail standards, while obviously there, we have to deal with them and it's a requirement obviously, but I wanna be clear that, you know, the jail standards is a minimum, right? It's not a maximum. It's a minimum. And so meeting, while they may, we may scratch our heads as to why some of this got approved and why they suggested certain things, again, it's, it's not necessarily always gonna be the best thing. And I think we have to defer to some degree to the sheriff and his people who are dealing with this day in and day out as to what's best for their safety. And so.
Well, and it's for me.
We're certainly willing to accommodate that.
I wanna make sure the sheriff is completely on board. That's what he does.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you Raj. Are there any other, hold on Sheriff, one more question sir.
I'm not trying to get involved with your, with your operation either, but, you know, I just, anything that I can do, call me. I'd be glad to, you know, meet with you. I mean, I have some experience in what, you know, what goes on inside the walls, you know, so, you know, as far as correctional officers and all. you know, as far as correctional officers and all that, so.
Yes sir.
Twenty-one years, so, call me.
You want these back?
Not, that's fine, if you don't call me, that's fine too.
You want these back, I, I know we kind of took those pictures from you, you want these back?
Yes sir.
No, keep them.
Okay, alright.
Don't distribute them.
Judge, the only question that I have regarding this matter is that, um, I know it's, it's all about the money, right? So, uh, and I know as part of this project, there's no more funding in this project.
Yes sir.
So that's something that, either we're going to go through this exercise, and then we don't have the funding for it, then who's going to pay for it?
I've got a question.
I understand that, Juan.
Can, can, can the cameras and all that be spent from the inmates' funds?
I can look at that sir.
Yeah, I, I think that the cameras, it's going to involve, the inmates can be spent from the inmates', I mean, I just looked at first, and then give us a cost.
Juan, I think you're asking though, in order for us to do this test, that we need some dollars?
Well, I mean, I think.
He's saying don't do it if we're not.
We'll be okay with the mock, it's just, if we're going to go through this exercise, I mean, say for example, right, thirty thousand dollars, I mean, it might be twice as much with this, you know, with the, I'm just saying, I'm just.
Okay, so you're saying, uh, that we need to work with Sheriff and Dale and everybody so that when the agenda item comes back on, we understand what our funding sources are?
Yeah.
Are they, will you help us with that?
Yeah, and I don't know that I think it's going to come back more expensive, I'm telling you, that Lexan I put on my house was not expensive. I mean, it was, no, no, I'm just telling you, I've had some experience with this stuff, and it's, no, 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 my.
Well, let's just find out, you know.
Put them on like ten or twelve windows.
Okay, Juan, thank you for bringing it up, we have to be sensitive to the cost and knowing what our sources are. Sheriff, if you don't mind, maybe.
My window's bigger than that.
Check that out and let us know what, what you find out. Okay, guys, that's, that's all there is there. So at this point, Lauta, we will not be, we will not be moving towards, unless you, in other words, the, the, the order was for this thirty-two thousand for these metal.
So we're going to table this, right? We just need to table this till then.
Okay, let's get a motion to table.
Motion to table.
Motion table, first and second, we've had lots of discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, aye.
Just put it back on the agenda, Tiner, whoever, for the next, Juan, someone for the next agenda, at least we can discuss it.
Yeah, it needs to come back on, Tiner.
Uh, Judge Commissioners, on item number one, uh, Public Works is considering, I mean, recommending approval of the, uh, construction contact change order number one with Mercer Construction Company of, of contract for the waterline improvements project, and I think it's like three thousand dollars for the, for the change order. And we're recommending approval.
A motion and a second, motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, aye? Thanks Juan for getting that done. Michael, we have three items that are important.
Is that all on the number two also?
We did number two already.
Part of it, right, okay. All right. Good afternoon Judge.
Good afternoon.
Okay, uh, this first item is the discussion and award of the Hilltop Community Center re-roof, uh, and HVAC replacement project. Uh, we brought this, uh, to court back in the beginning part of the year, and it was, uh, tabled, it was tabled at that time and asked to go out, the bids were all rejected, we had to come back, um, again, and we came back on the last session, uh, we had to table it at that time because we wanted to have, have an opportunity to discuss with the engineers, um, as to options for value engineering. And so I, my understanding is that those talks have been completed, and we're recommending award to Progressive Structures for, for only the base bid amount, is that correct?
And can you, yeah, and just tell everybody that base bid, I see it here, okay. Got it.
Okay, can we have some discussion?
Sure.
Um, I do not want to spend one point two million dollars on that building, I think too much has already been spent on it, but I'm not naive enough to, to realize that we have to get the roof fixed, because I think this is a CIP, um, project, and it's probably not going to be at the top of the list of projects down the road, I realize that. But in the meantime, I'd like to have a roof that's going to last for years to come, so that when we can improve that building or get a new building, we can, because I think it should have been torn down. Uh, I think it's going to be a money pit. So I've talked to you guys, come on up, and Edward, Juan, we've had some extensive discussions on this, so let's tell us what we're going to do, what we decided to do.
Judge, we reviewed the different bids, we actually went out to, uh, one of our roofing contractors, part of the break, uh, the, the gentlemen that are doing our assessment for the additional insurance monies, we had them looking at the roof as well. So he gave us a bid of about one point two million, so we know we're in the range as far as what the actual cost to replace the roof is.
And that's, for people that don't know, Hilltop, there's a bunch of buildings that have separated wings, almost like our old elementary schools, and so this is for all of the, of the wings, if you will?
Yes Judge.
Forty-four thousand.
Forty-four thousand square feet.
Got it.
So Commissioner Vaughn had requested, okay, if we came back with a building, what would approximate cost of a building would be? Uh, our architects from, um, LNV here, this is Craig Forside, Andrew Newman.
Hi there.
Um, came up with a number of about fifteen million dollars, so we, you know, we're, as part of your.
Wait, but that's fifteen million for how many square feet?
We don't need that many square feet.
Forty-four thousand square feet, that's what the total estimated cost would be to replace the building.
To do a whole new building.
To do a whole new building, and even if we stripped it down, say, to half the size, it'd be about seven million dollars, and that's what Commissioner's saying is, if this is part of, and it's going to be part of the CIP, because she wants us to.
You're telling me it's going to cost three hundred and forty dollars a square foot?
It's closer to three fifty, so it's around that.
Come on, in whose world? No offense, I'm, that's the, you've got to be kidding me.
That's the going rate.
Isn't it crazy Brent, I know.
I'm sorry, I, 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 I'm going to question that all day long, that, I, I.
Okay, but let's continue with the, with the concept, and we can argue about the dollars, because I'm, I want to.
Correct.
Believe it or not, I, who never get tired, I'm actually on, on the hypoglycemic Chesney trail, I'm actually.
You know, you want to adjourn for lunch so I can call.
No, I want to make sure that we get a really good sense of this, because the money we'll argue about for a long time. Let's, let's talk about the concept, because it's, it's, it's a really, it's the type of community center and the location, Commissioner, that really does merit a new building.
Exactly.
So, but I can't, I want to table the, how much a square foot later, I want to keep talking here, keep going.
So, we, in this scenario, we dropped it down to about twenty-two thousand square feet, so about half the size that we're currently using.
Got it.
As part of your program, you know, the, the interesting thing I was telling the Commissioners is that CIP information is very interesting, and it, it's in-depth, if you look at it in-depth, it's where do you replace the building, what point, what is the actual total cost, it's, it's more of a system rather than a program. It's a, if you, if you continue the system, it'll tell you when you need to replace each and every building. These buildings are upwards of, you know, fifty to sixty years old, so.
This one's eighty.
Correct, about eighty years old. So, we, we've made improvements, and, and I'll let Craig and them tell you what the improvements are going to be, or what we're looking at, and how we're looking at reducing the costs.
Thank you, hi Craig.
Hello, Judge and Commissioners. Um, as part of this is, as Edward has stated, uh, we've gone back through and then kind of preliminarily looked at some potential cost savings. Uh, this roof still is high, the original bid from when we bid it the first time was one point eight million, so we managed to cut about a quarter of a million, uh, out of it, from the second bid, but we realized that that's still high, that we were tasked with trying to get this down around the one point four million mark. So, as, as part of our studies investigating various items, we've got, uh, a significant amount, we're calling it a re-roof project, but there's a significant amount of work in new HVAC equipment. Um, what we were, we were originally asked to do was take all of those existing air conditioning units off of the roofs, and put them internally into the building. So we have to create new mechanical chases, we have to do a lot of new ductwork, uh, and then hiding that, of course doors, hardware, and all that kind of stuff, it adds a significant amount of money, uh, to the project. Part of what we are investigating now is, we have units, existing rooftop units, I believe it's over Wing F, that are in really good shape, uh, there's a potential we could keep those, so that would save a significant amount of money there. Uh, the other AC units, if we decided to kind of go that route and keep those units on the rooftop, um, would maybe, we, we haven't investigated far enough, originally we were just saying take them off, but some of those units may be okay. Uh, I will say on the remainder of the building, that they were installed incorrectly, they were not put on curbs, they were not sealed properly, and that's a significant part of why we have major leaks in a lot of these other wings, so.
And was that work done Craig?
The.
That installation, just.
The, Wing F is the most recent, and we believe that was last.
No, it's been about when Commissioner Banyas was.
Oh, it's been, wow.
For the Wing F?
Darn, all I could think of was the statute of limitations. Sorry Simon, but I'm looking at you. I've got a lawyer in the room. Okay, continue.
So that, that, that portion, the HVAC portion, we think there's significant, uh, savings that are available there. Um, we've also reviewed the bid from the low, uh, the low number, the low, uh, Progressive Structures. Um, we are seeing some potential overruns in cost, we've got a significant number in carpentry. Uh, what we believe that that entails is blocking that's required by the roofers to do their job. We verified, Haber Roofing, that's another, uh, good roofing contractor, so, so we're glad that we've got him as part of this project, but, uh, Haber has confirmed that he's got money already stated in his roof bid, so that's, that's something else that we need to just negotiate with that contractor and see if maybe we can pull some of those monies out. That would account for about another fifty thousand is what we're looking at. Um, what else? We've got, uh, as we keep saying, uh, Wing F, that roof is, is not that old, is, is in relatively good shape. Um, we put in our documents that that needed to be completely recoded, it's not a new roof system, but it's a new, um, liquid applied roof coating. If that roof, if we looked at it maybe a different way, and had them, uh, just do some thermal scans, we could pick up wherever the, the primary areas of damage are and just patch, and that, I, I feel like we could still get ten years warranty out of that thing, so.
I've got to ask here.
Elements that, that are really.
Glad we're.
I'm sorry, I'm dying over here, I got to ask. I, I know this is in my precinct, but this is, I, I, what I don't understand is, if this building is an eighty-year-old building, or whatever your, whatever the number is, why wouldn't we look at tearing this building down and building a new facility that is not forty-four thousand square feet? That, there, there are prefab buildings, there are metal buildings, there are, there are things like that that are not three hundred and forty dollars a square foot? I, I'm just, I'm staggered at that number, I, I've built recently, I know people who've built recently, there is nobody I know that's spending three hundred and forty dollars a square foot, even with all the tariffs. Um, so I, I'm just struggling with this in general, to put a million dollars into a building that's eighty years old. I've got the same arguments that I'm going to make to the court on this, on the building we're in, that we're fixing to start thinking about building, spending all this money on this forty-year-old building, but a sixty or seventy-year-old building? I mean, I, I don't, I don't really know, I, I'm really struggling with this, I mean, I don't want to not be supportive of Commissioner Vaughn, but this is really.
No, 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 I, I agree with you completely, the life expectancy of that building is gone, but what is a shame, and it's been done, you can't change it, they've already spent two million in there. So I do not want to spend any more money than I have to, that we have to on that building. I, it's ridiculous that we did that, and I'm with you Commissioner, I do not believe any way that it could cost that much money to build a building now. And I brought this up to you Edward, about building a tin building, putting brick, um, brick around and making it really pretty, they do it all the time, they've got a beautiful one sitting, sitting over there in Guth Park for the senior citizens. So there are other things we can do if we can think out of the box, but the problem, Judge, and I need help, and see, I look at differently, I don't think precincts should decide or bring, I think we should all have input, because this affects the whole county.
I appreciate that.
We're talking about one point two million dollars, that is why I've kept bringing it back and bringing it back, because I thought there is no way that I want to vote to spend that kind of money on that building. So I would like some input from all of you guys, but I know this, no matter what we do, we have to fix the roof somehow, so that it doesn't, when it rains, we've got to do something.
And, and that's where I'm looking and going, okay, I get that money has been spent, and that's significant, but to throw more money after money doesn't necessarily fix it, because I don't know what's coming next, and I haven't been out there in a long time, so shame on me, I'm going to drive out, believe me now, I'm going to drive out there, um, but um, I'm, I'm struggling with, I mean, I'm struggling with this, I mean, I know that we need to do that, I mean, we got to have Hilltop Center, I get it, but I don't understand why we need twenty-two thousand square feet.
Commissioner, let me add one more, one more facet to this. Ordinarily we use between sixty, if you go out to the facility, you'll see that there's about sixty to eight thousand people that use it a year. The reason we know that is because the original person that developed it, uh, her name was Beverly Brock, used to take a list, she'd have a list of everybody, and then she'd, at the end of the year, she'd count that, and she did that for five, ten years, so she knew that there was sixty to eighty thousand people that used that facility in a given year. What we've done as part of this project, um, is that it's also a FEMA project, so I've got Natalie here with the grants, Natalie Ekstrom, they put in for the full one point four million dollars. Right now we're getting a hundred and ninety-two thousand for some roof replacement, we're at about seventy-five percent. So what we're also doing here is increasing the time, we may end up, you know, getting one point four million of this roof paid for by the government, and yes, I still understand that still.
Or we may not get any more.
We may not get any more.
And it may be ten years before we get FEMA payments for anything.
Correct.
We can't even get FEMA payments for things on the island that were directly affected by the hurricane, we're, we got our last payment from hurricane whichever this year, which was ten years ago, so when you say FEMA, you're losing me.
No, no.
I love you, you're my guy, but you say FEMA, I'm out the door on you.
I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, I'm just telling you, I hate FEMA, they stink.
There, there is a possibility, it's in the portal, um, we, we have an opportunity, let's just say, unless, as Commissioner says, I'm trying to protect the asset, I'm, whichever way she wants to go, if she doesn't want to do that, she wants to tear the building down, I'm good with that.
I know you are.
Yeah.
Build a small building, it's fine too.
So, I want to, I want to.
But the thing is, we've, we've got improvements that we've got to protect right now at this point in time.
You just said a bad four-letter word and it set me off again, so.
And, and we have to have a building out there, there's no doubt about that, do we have to have one that big? No.
I think, you know, look at the buildings, go to Junior Bag Road, and look at those buildings, they don't look like, like metal buildings, but they are.
Oh, they look really nice, and I think we've got to look at this and the entire Oh, they look really nice, and I think we've gotta look at this in the entire county, on the buildings that we've got, we've got some old buildings, and we've gotta quit throwing money into 'em, I really believe that. Cause of maintenance cost alone.
I'm not, I'm not for spending a million dollars on something that we can't even decide if we wanna keep, so-
So, I'm gonna try to keep us on task here, on the discussing award, am I hearing, um, correctly, that you all would like to table this award?
I think what they wanna do is, suggestion was to go ahead and do the award, and that doesn't mean we're gonna do it. It means that we're going to go down, 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 and cut this down, cause it was one point six, we got to one point two, so I'm saying, we keep whittling it down, to do whatever we have to do to fix the roof.
So, you're talking about the thermal scan and the patch work?
But, but the problem is, you're still talking a million bucks, I mean, and, and this is, you, you're right, you have a great roofing company, I'm very familiar with them, and they, they do wonderful work, they will give us the best possible deal, so this isn't about them, this is about where do we wanna spend this money, and a million dollars would sure go a long way towards a new building.
Well, here's the deal, though, is that, is it patchable?
We don't know till we scan.
Until you scan it, so we've gotta do that.
Wing F, we believe we could patch.
You what now? Say that again?
Wing F is, is-
Wing F?
Wing F.
Roof, uh, and we believe that that could be patched. Patching is really not an option for any of the other wings, because that original roof was done with gravel. Cannot do a new gravel roof, we can't patch with gravel, none of that meets any of the new windstorm codes or any code.
I, I can't vote to spend a million bucks.
Okay, let me ask you this, what if you went back, and I know y'all don't like this, cause that roof that you're talking about's really gonna be a good roof, it's gonna last for twenty-five years, I think, but hopefully that building's not gonna be there for twenty-five years. If you go with the existing roof, what does that cost? Because I got a bid for it, and it was three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, if you went with what you've got.
Well, we'd have to really look at that closely, that, that's something that we haven't delved into at all, but-
Why, why don't we try to get an al- a real alternative that has real meaning? Michael, how long would it take if we went out for procurement on design bid build for a new Hilltop Community Center? I mean, like lickety-split, I mean, let's, let's-
And not, and with some, some direction, like-
Well, yeah, I mean, we could even, we could even sole-source, uh, LNV to do this. You do not understand what you're comparing unless you compare it. So, I'd like to see a design bid build with an appropriate square footage to be determined by, you know, Carolyn, we made a little mistake, we have this amazing Northwest Asset Management Committee, and we haven't met yet, why don't you lead it? Make Hilltop a, you know, priority number one, so I can committee it to get going? I'll sit with you on it, but if you take the lead, then we can get, Michael, I'm trying not to delve too much into your area, but we cannot make a, a worthy business decision until I get to see, or we get to see, you know, what I'm comparing. Because I can tell you, I've done the math in my head, if we did a CO, okay, I mean, with a million dollars, I could have debt service for a very long time on a new five million dollar building, okay? I mean, that's just in my head, quick, lickety-split, three percent with our bond rating. You know, we need to make smart business decisions, this is only one piece of the pie, and, and again, because you've done so much effort, I would, I would suggest, I'd like to visit with Michael, cause he's gonna have some concepts on this, but my initial instinct is to say, you're professional service, if you don't have a master service agreement with us, we should get one from you, so that we can move quickly on seeing what a design bid build will look like. What do y'all think about that?
We could certainly do that, yeah, absolutely.
Michael, what do you think about that? That way Carolyn, in, in a committee, could really decide whether the investment of a million dollars is good, or we could see our way, CO our way, and that million dollars that you were gonna spend just to patch a roof, not even perfectly make it great, on an eighty-year-old building? She could have seven to eight years' worth of, of debt service with that million dollars. I mean, that's why we need a budget office, by the way. Because these people were, 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 that's why, forgive me, I'm gonna put a little, go ahead, one more knife, this is what happens when you get hungry, the knives start coming out. This is why, you, if you don't have a capital improvement plan, this is why you make mistakes, and somebody made a mistake to put two million dollars into an eighty million dollar building that thought, they thought at the time that was the best business decision, but you can see that's clearly not. And, and, but I'm with you, you cannot chase good money after bad, um, so let's, again, I'm trying to move us forward, it's actually says discuss an award, and I'm concerned if I don't get a motion, I'm not addressing it correctly.
So, let me, well, no, hold on just a moment.
Okay.
So, what it sounds like, what I'm hearing from you guys, is that what we wanna look at is substantially changing what was on this original bid, and if we're gonna substantially change, then we have no choice but to reject all bids.
Louder, I'm sorry.
You can table it, again.
But I, it was my understanding that if we went ahead and awarded it, we don't have to even accept, we don't have to do anything, we can look at the deal, and if we don't like it, we don't accept it.
You still have that option as well.
Cause we still have to look at the roof, no matter what we do, we have to look at the roof, because even if we were to build a new building, that takes time.
Right. But how can we award it in good conscience, knowing that the bid's a million seven, and the best we're gonna get it down to is a million two? How you gonna do it?
We don't know that, do we? No.
So, you think you could get this down to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, based on the scope? How can we do that? That's significantly changing.
I don't see how you can get it there without substantially-
So-
-the scope, and that's, that's what we-
Well, I, I'm okay to, to buy you some time, Carolyn, thirty days if you wanna table.
Okay, that's fine, I just don't want us to have a, a storm, and us have a roof that's leaking.
I mean, you gotta go out there and patch where you gotta patch, that's, that's part of maintenance, everyday maintenance, so if there's a roof leak, you gotta go patch the roof leak.
You know, I wonder how much the thermal scanning would cost, just to get that done?
We can't patch.
We can't?
You can't patch.
We can?
You can.
Sure.
But I don't think that's, maybe what we ought to do is, is thermal scan, uh, to, to make sure that we cover our bases on mitigating our insurance issues. I wish we had, that's a Carlisle question, just someone note that down to call Chase on that.
I don't know that we wanna alert, they may tell us anyway.
No, but you have a, you have a duty to mitigate.
Oh, right.
Yeah. Thermal's- Do you mind getting back to this, to the court administrator, uh, office, please? That's Mr. Little, immediately on that.
How long do you wanna table it for?
To pay for that, mine-
Right. Cause we could maybe authorize that. Michael, what do you think about that?
How long do you wanna table it for?
The, the next Commissioner's Court meeting? You can get a, a quote by then?
I do wanna clarify, though-
Yes.
On the thermal scanning, the only wing that we would recommend-
Is F.
Is F, and it, that-
But that's what we know is bad.
Well, that's the one that's in good shape.
It's in good shape, the rest-
Oh, it's in good shape.
That's in good shape. The rest of these roofs are, are done with the old type of gravel.
Yeah.
We cannot patch those.
Flat roof, or they're flat?
Hey, well, I hate to tell you, we got buckets everywhere in this courthouse too, so it's not like all of us are, we're all living with water issues.
Before we mo- move to table, since this is part of it, we can give direction to staff as part of this, I believe, cause it's germane, to go back and look at what it would cost to build a ten thousand, and I'm not sure that's the right number, square foot, you know, prefab metal building, to replay, you know, cause I'd like to know that, I mean, you know, cause it, I, I, I just think there's a lot of things we can do out there that can give a really cool new look to the Hilltop Community Center, we could actually get more, you know, use out of it than we're getting now, and have a brand-new building that has a fifty-year lifespan, or forty-year lifespan, so how do we, I mean, I think we can, as long as you hear that direction too, or I don't know how we do that, but I'd sure as heck like to know what that would be.
And I would too, I'd like to know, and also the cost of tearing it down.
Well, that's why you need an engineer to go out there and do that.
That's probably a hundred grand.
And, and I will kind of address the overall dollar amounts that we were talking about, when we threw out that fifteen million dollar figure, um, that encompassed an awful lot, that's part of the, the full demolition of that site, that's coming in and regrading that entire site, bringing in new select fill and some other materials, because we know that foundation needs to be built up and designed, so that it will meet all the new windstorm criteria, so there's quite a bit of hidden cost, I guess, I, I don't know another way to put it, but it's stuff that the normal public doesn't see, but there's a lot of, uh, behind-the-scenes type items that need to be dealt with, and they've got a significant dollar figure attached to them, so, um, that's, that's part of why that number, and, and of course, we're shooting high, this is very preliminary in-
Right.
Stage, but-
There's a lot of cast iron pipes, Commissioner, that turn the water yellow, that are-
All that would have to be taken up.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And that's why I like a design bid build, because, you know, we would have the full turn key operation. The other thing is, and this is very rarely done, but it's very, it's a good practice, once we get to the end of the summer, if we can survive, we'll get our CIP plan, and we will talk to our financial advisors, and then we can say to, in engineering, we want you to design bid build a X million dollar building, period. What would we get for, in other words, what do you, in other words, we give to you a number that we can live with, and then you'll say, that will be a ten thou-, you know, we can give you our parameters, how many square feet we want, of course, but then you would come back and say, you can have that, but you can't have X, Y, and Z bill, you know, whistles, right?
But I mean, she's on, let me tell ya, Judge is on point, if, if there's a million dollars' worth of funds that are sitting in your account for this building, and you used, you, I don't know, and you use that as, to float a bond, and you can get a five million dollar bond, and use that million dollars, I don't know how, you know, I don't know how that works, but if you can, if you're able to do that in government bonding, and you can use that, and you can use that as your, your, uh, what am I trying to, your, your collateral, or it's not the right word, but yes, that's basically it.
Down payment.
You're down, you know, however you wanna do it, and you can get five million for that one million dollar bond, then, uh, that's, I mean, that's, that's a nice new building out there.
So, let's just move to table it.
Okay. Sorry, guys, that, the discussion was very helpful, I've got a motion and a second to table, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, uh, the elects two should be a lot easier, Michael, they're, um-
Yes.
They're having to deal with vehicles.
Yes, and I need to address them in a different order.
Okay, go to three first?
Yeah, we need to do three first. There's a loan agreement, uh, that the District Attorney's Office has with the CCPD on a Mercedes vehicle, and, uh, they wish to terminate that agreement and return the vehicle to CCPD. They will accept it, and then they'll process it in for a sale at an auction, and CCPD will receive eighty percent of the proceeds, DA will receive twenty percent of those proceeds.
I've got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All those, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Is that a savings to us, um, of a particular amount that you could provide?
It's not, it's not a huge savings, it's really gonna be-
Okay, just wondering.
More of, they have a vehicle that doesn't work for them, because it's got two costly repairs right now.
Okay, got it.
And we've got another county vehicle that they've come out and test drove on item four C two.
Okay, all right, let's go to that one.
And they had a Mercedes, is that what it said?
Mm-hmm. It was a seized vehicle.
It was seized from drug, for-
No, but it just doesn't look good for us to be driving a Mercedes around, and just the cost alone, maintenance, unreal.
Well, we're-
Sorry.
Undercover, undercover, Commissioner, undercover, undercover.
Yeah. Yeah, it was old.
Yeah.
Costs too much to repair, then.
Yeah, costs too much to repair, okay.
And are y'all wearing gold chains when you're driving that around, and-
Doesn't look good for the county.
You know, whatever.
Anyway, so now we're going to maiden in the USA with Ford, so let's go on with number two.
Yeah, so four C two is authorized reassigning a twenty-fifteen Ford Interceptor from the warehouse to the District Attorney's Office, and there are some minor repairs that will be needed to that vehicle that the DA's office has agreed to take care of, and we believe that process will take about two to three weeks to get all the repairs done and get the vehicle in service from the DA.
So, could I get a motion for that? And a second? All right, I've got a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye for the reassignment?
Aye.
Aye? Pose same sign? Okay, thank you, Michael, we so appreciate you. Well, now the auditor, are they, um, we have a budget change order, and it's under D one. Flip to that.
Yes, our District Office is requesting for approval of budget change order number sixteen. We're relocating budget to cover overtime, sometimes, and, uh, Corral Number One and District, uh, Corral Number Twenty-Eight, this is less than a thousand dollars for both. Also, we are relocating, uh, funds in, in IT Department to replace call boxes to comply with jail, uh, jail standards, is, we're talking about the sixty thousand, that's the one that you're seeing there. This is a big one that we have, sixty thousand.
Yes, ma'am, those call boxes are damaged, and I'm gonna work with the sheriff, believe it or not, I, I think I have a really interesting idea on that one. I'm, I'm on the ideating week, by the way, see what, see what three days vacation does to me? Clears my brain. Anyway, I'm, I, I wanna share that with you, but this is a recurring problem, Commissioners, and so what I don't like about it is that you've got to note that we've gotta save dollars, and, and we've gotta do this, but we've gotta come up with a better solution, cause these are always, is that right, Sheriff? They're just perpetually- Yeah, so we all want, I've got this new idea that I saw on GovTech that I wanna share